Don't because I've had a manual entry database before and then it just become outdated very, very quickly. Once we, once we've kicked off our, um, our initiative again, once we kicked off our printer refresh initiative again, it, we would roll out eight, 10 printers and nothing would be updated. And unfortunately, I can't, I can't rely on having an inaccurate database, especially when we're talking about having a steady up cycle of, um, of printer refreshes. You know, if you want to have a steady cycle of printer refresh, we're all set, log off. Chris doesn't want to get involved with printers anymore, that's what he's telling me. Alright, alright Chris. So, what was the consensus? Are we good? Do we, how was the audio? Audio sounds good. On, on cable? On cable? And Anthony, um, okay, great. Anthony, were you able to do some testing to see if we had the stream? After we rebooted the encoder?
Uh, are they supposed to be in this chat? I don't hear them in the chat.
Who?
Anthony nor Chris.
Anthony's not here at the moment. Oh, Chris is, Chris is messaging me. Okay.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, Chris, can you have Anthony test the stream again? Um, and, uh, and see what happens? Yes, sir. Okay, great. Wally, you think we're good?
Alright, sounds good. Thank you.
Yep. Bye.
Bye.
Good evening, everyone. A quorum. Good evening, everyone. A quorum being present, I am going to call tonight's June 28th meeting to order. Persuaded to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, adopted by the Massachusetts General Assembly and approved by the Governor, the city is authorized to use remote participation at meetings of the cities of the Cambridge School Committee, I mean, sorry, City Council, wrong night. In addition to having members of the council participate remotely, we've set up Zoom teleconference for public comment. Members of the public are also allowed to make their comments in person in the Sullivan Chamber. Please be aware that Zoom is primarily being used for public comment. The meeting is not being streamed on the website. If you'd like to provide public comment, you can sign up at www.cambridgeMA.gov-publiccomment. We will not allow any additional public comments sign up after 6:00. The first order of business is a roll call of members. President, Clerk Wilson.
Counselor Carlon.
Present.
Present. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Present and audible.
Present. Counselor McGovern.
Present and audible.
Present. Counselor Nolan.
Present.
Present. Counselor Simmons.
Present and audible.
Present. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Present and audible.
Present. Counselor Toomey.
Present and audible.
Present. Counselor Zandervan.
Present and audible.
Present. Mayor Siddiqui.
Present.
There are nine members present.
With that, all of tonight's votes will be by roll call. We'll now open public comment. Persuaded to Rule 24C-1A, in the event there are 20 or more speakers signed up, the amount of time allocated will be two minutes. Individuals are not permitted to allocate the remainder of their time to other speakers. I ask that you state your name and add us for the record and the item on the agenda that you're speaking on. The first person who has signed up is Alan Sedoun, followed by Jonathan Behrens.
Hi, my name is Alan Sedoun. I'm between leases but will soon be at 24 Union Street, here in support of Policy Order Number 10, the condo conversion ordinance, as well as Policy Order Number 8 regarding stipends for appointed boards. On condo conversions, I just want to highlight that this proposed ordinance doesn't and nor should it ban condo conversions outright. What it does is ensure that any tenants affected by a condo conversion is treated justly, given plenty of notice to get their affairs in order, and are compensated for their relocation. That's exactly the approach we should be taking to this kind of thing, prioritizing the needs of renters and protecting them from immediate insecurity. If we could guarantee that kind of protection to all kinds of conversions, including rental-to-rental conversions, I would support that as well. But given that the state only gives us the right to specifically regulate condo conversions, specifically regulating condo conversions is what we should do. On boards and commissions, I do believe our boards are unrepresentative and out of touch, and I'm tentatively in support of the charter amendment regarding council approval of appointments. But the real issue here is not that the manager controls appointments. The real issue here is that the job is so awful and unappealing that only people with a very privileged amount of free time and a very particular sense of devotion would even consider applying. That devotion can be laudable, but in many cases, it's a much more problematic neighborhood defender kind of devotion. The real solution here is to make the job of being on a board or commission more appealing to encourage more applicants, and particularly applicants of underrepresented backgrounds. I'm strongly in support of Policy Order Number 8, and I hope we can get stipends for our board members as soon as possible. But in addition to stipends, what we need is a critical review of the job description and whether the work before a board is the best use of that citizen's time and attention. You know, I think, for instance, a planning board, I think it's so tied up in special permits for individual buildings that they don't do real citywide planning. I think most BZA cases are the kind of thing that make you think, why should this be before a appointed board? We should think deeper than just stipends. And I think the clock is off. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, for fixing it. I'm going to-
Hi. Jonathan Behrens, 115 Hampshire Street.
Sorry, can you just hold on a second, Jonathan? Thanks for your patience. All right, Jonathan, go ahead, and then Christopher Schmidt.
Hi, Jonathan Behrens, 115 Hampshire Street. There's lots on the agenda today, but I wanted to focus on just a couple points. First, I urge the council to deny Charter right number one. This appropriation would be the last time that the council gets to have a binding vote on how the $65 million will be spent. Yes, we heard that the city manager plans on listening to the discussion at the Finance Committee, but there's a huge difference between a binding vote and a non-binding request. It's also great to see the council getting involved, rolling on charter reform. The proposals seem reasonable, but I do ask people to be realistic about what the changes will accomplish. Being able to veto appointments would give the council more power, but is the power going to be used? Council also has the power to vote down budgets. Is that actually something that happens, or does that budget decision to get deferred just to the city manager? However, the one that I'm really excited about is Policy Order Number 8. As the previous speaker noted, we could really use a lot of reforms to how our boards and commissions operate. The advertisement for the recent planning board opening estimated on the order of 1,000 hours of meeting time over the course of the term. And that doesn't count by some estimates nearly double that in prep time. So 3,000-hour time commitment for this board, and you're expecting someone to donate their time, not be compensated for it in any way. The kind of applicants that you're going to get, the kind of people that can actually sacrifice their time and be able to contribute to this, and who want to contribute to the city in this way is such a narrow slice of our community that I don't think it necessarily gives the outcomes that we would like. Thank you.
Next up, Christopher Schmidt, followed by Saul Tannenbaum.
Thanks. Christopher Schmidt, 17 Laurel Street. I wanted to first speak on Charter right number one, the American Rescue Plan appropriation. I really appreciate that the city administration, the city manager, is so dedicated to finding ways to ensure that we can use these funds responsibly and move forward with them. But I would encourage the city council to deny this appropriation at this time, because I do think that this is a long-term source of funding with $65 million on the line. And I think that rather than approving this as a single number without even a plan as to how it will be spent, that it should be something that the city manager talks to the city first. Thankfully, much to our credit and to the city manager's credit, Cambridge is a wealthy city. We have significant funds available for whatever we need in most cases. And I think that it will be okay if we wait a month to appropriate these funds for which federal approval on how they can be spent is not even approved yet. Other cities like Boston are appointing entire task forces on how to spend this money before appropriating it, and some are actually hiring an entire person in order to manage these funds and how they're spent. I think that we can follow those leads. So I would encourage you to vote that appropriation down. I trust the city manager will work with you to come to an equitable resolution on how to spend these funds in the Finance Committee and moving forward after that seems to make more sense. Policy Order Number 8, stipends for appointed boards. You know, as someone who recently applied to the planning board and failed to do the math that Jonathan just shared with you on 3,000 hours of commitment, I'm now wondering if I've made a mistake. But I do think that, you know, a planning board member said it's just not sustainable to expect someone with a job and family to spend five hours every Tuesday for free talking about architecture, and I would say also getting yelled at by the public. So I think stipends are a great idea, and I support the condo conversion ordinance moving forward to the House Committee. Thank you.
We will go to Saul Tannenbaum, followed by Maya Counter.
Saul Tannenbaum is not in the Zoom. Maya Counter was signed up to speak in person. I do not see them here. So we will go to Nina Tumarkin. Nina, go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi. Oh, yes. So I was going to talk, I am going to talk a little bit about the proposed name change for the Agassi neighborhood. I guess I had understood that this discussion was going to be about that. I think it's particularly fascinating to have this. I'm a professional historian and have studied name changes in the French Revolution and in the Russian Revolution. So I guess I just want to express my enthusiasm for people's impulse to change the name of the Agassi neighborhood. I don't think these changes should be undertaken lightly, and it is, I think, a bit of a disappointment to me, maybe as a Harvard alumna, that the connection with Harvard University and its great naturalists has to be snapped in terms with this name change. But it looks like there's an overwhelming enthusiasm for it, and it's something for us to all watch and really take very seriously about the difference between the Agassi school, for example, which is the Baldwin School, and the neighborhood. When Leningrad took back the name of St. Petersburg in 1991, it actually retained the region, the neighborhood, was called the Leningrad neighborhood, Leningrad region, which it still is. So I guess it's important to just keep in mind that there's a really huge global historic context to name changes. And I urge everybody to read up on their history, because that's always a great idea. Thank you very much.
Next up is Evelyn Rivera, followed by James Williamson.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Evelyn Rivera. I am the CEO and owner of Urban Legends, and together with our partners, the Vaston Garden, we hope to have our recreational retail shop here in Cambridge at 200 Mont Senior Ryan Highway operational this calendar year. I am a 20-year civil servant working for the city of Austin. I serve as Commissioner for the Red Sox Foundation's RVI softball league, and I proudly serve on the boards of Madison Park Development and Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiatives, both located in Roxbury. Prior to us finding our current partners, the Vaston Garden, who support us financially, we had partners who abandoned us because the process in the Commonwealth to getting a retail cannabis shop was too slow and too expensive. To be clear, we have great partners who are sticking with us, and our financing, but our financing only happened because they were willing to put up licenses, properties, and even their personal homes up for collateral against debt financing. It has been a very long, tough road, and they are sticking with us to make sure that we both succeed. I am here tonight to express how important financial resources are for economic empowerment and social equity applicants. While, yes, the moratorium has given some of us the opportunity to secure a location and host community agreement in Cambridge, unfortunately, that has not been enough because it does not address the number-one barrier to entry into the cannabis market, which is money. We all know the cost lead, how costly it is to secure location in Cambridge, and without funding, we will leave social equity and economic empowerment applicants at a disadvantage. Thank you.
Next up, we have James Williamson, and then Hiba Haddaf.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
My name is James Williamson, 1000 Jackson Place at Jefferson Park. I'm speaking on the tree protection ordinance. At Jefferson Park, they're planning to tear down all the buildings, and as part of their plan, they want to cut down at least 144 trees out of a total of 204 trees. Some of those trees are in bad shape, but not all of them. And if they get underway, as they did when they did the state side of Jefferson Park, they cut down 88 trees out of 96 trees. They said they were going to save eight, and during construction, they cut down an additional three without notifying anybody and without having to ask permission from anybody. In that case, the Board of Zoning Appeal had given the approval. So tree loss is a serious, is a serious matter, and it's had an impact on the lives of people living in what's called affordable housing. I don't, I really don't understand why the tree protection ordinance doesn't offer equal protection to low and moderate-income people in Cambridge. I think it's blatantly discriminatory. I'm seeing something odd on my screen. Okay, I'm down to 37 seconds now. So there's a very modest amendment that's been authored. I mean, I think if people are worried about the cost of saving trees, then they should support this amendment, because I think it's intended to help address that. If people are worried about not being able to build housing without any restrictions, and it has to be done this way in Cambridge, the Cambridge Housing Authority now controls the Belmont Housing Authority, why don't we spend-
Thank you, James, for your testimony. Hiba, and then Nicole Snow.
Hello, my name is Hiba Daif. I am at 154 Prospect Street. Hello, Mayor Siddiqui and honorable members of the committee. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here today on behalf of the Cambridge Youth Council in support of Policy Order 150 to change the Agassi neighborhood name in honor and remembrance of Maria L. Baldwin. We, the council, do not condone the propagation of the Agassi name and the unjust and discriminatory history that holds, given the supremacist nature of the work of Louis Agassi. The city of Cambridge is indebted, however, to Maria L. Baldwin, principal educator and a proud part of our city's history, who not only represents everything this history strives to be and the values that we hold, but created and contributed to our community in a way that few have, least of all Louis Agassi. The Cambridge Chief Council and the young people of Cambridge, we serve to represent, support the work of Ms. Maya Counter and those before her who have worked tirelessly to rid the city of Cambridge of the Agassi name. Thank you again so much for your time and consideration, and we hope that you look favorably upon Policy Order 150. Thank you.
We will go to Nicole Snow, followed by Cia Samora.
Hello. Good evening, Nicole Snow, representing the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance at 1 Beacon Street- at 1 Beacon Street, Boston, Mass. 02108. Thank you to the Cambridge City Council for hearing our testimony today. I would like the city council to please come to an amenable conclusion for all parties involved so that patients in Cambridge and surrounding areas that use the Massachusetts Medical Program to access cannabis as medicine will have certainty. The Massachusetts Medical Program has reached over 100,000 registered patients, and those participants living and working in Cambridge want to know that this city of Cambridge cares about the program's longevity. Thank you.
Next up, Sia Samora, and then Leah Samora.
Hello, thank you. This is Sia Samora. I'm a verified economic empowerment applicant for cannabis business licensing in the state of Massachusetts. I'm also the owner and CEO of Yamba Market, looking to open in Central Square, Cambridge. And this is in reference to policy order number 11. I just had a few messages I wanted, I was hoping the council would consider. As you're considering this important issue, I would hope that the council would consider the extreme financial hurdles that us economic empowerment applicants face as we're trying to get open. You know, my own team, we're not managed or supported by large national conglomerates, and it's extremely expensive. I believe we should have a public dialogue to talk about the things that would best help economic empowerment applicants and their businesses. And I think it's clear as well that the number one thing that economic empowerment applicants need, equity businesses in this space need assistance with is money, is capital, and that type of financial support. And so I think any program should seriously consider real financial support going to economic empowerment applicants. And we would look for the council's assistance in trying to achieve that money, whether it's public or private. And I think that there are a lot of voices that should be heard on this issue. I encourage, I encourage a deeper discussion and a public discussion on exactly how we can best serve economic empowerment applicants and their businesses. I thank you for your time, and I give back my time. Thank you.
Next up, we have Leah Samora, followed by Anne Charlotte Hookstatis.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Cam- I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice a little bit, so I do apologize. Good evening, Cambridge City Council members. My name is Leah Samora, and I reside at 111 Wellington Hill Street. I am an economic empowerment applicant and also the CEO and co-owner of Yamba Boutique, which will be located at 31 Church Street in Harvard Square, which I'm sure all of you all know, something I'm very excited about, that it was once a police station. I just want to make a few points. So we all know the best way to measure success for any program is by using data, right? So numbers are the most powerful tools. They don't lie. Before we go and extend something like the moratorium, I think we should take a hard look at the data. A report should be delivered measuring the impact of this moratorium. I think what the numbers will show is that without funding, a moratorium alone doesn't move the needle. And to also just make sure that this industry is there for all of us and that it works for all of us that are involved. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Anne Charlotte Hookstatis, followed by Fuebe Sinclair.
Anne Charlotte and Fuebe have not joined. Nicole Lyons, please unmute yourself. You have the floor. Nicole does not seem to be unable to unmute. Next would be Lauren.
Yeah, go ahead, Nicole.
There I am. Thank you. Sorry about that. My name is Nicole Lyons, CEO of Lola's, located in Central Square. I'm speaking on number 11. I myself, along with every small business owner, was heavily impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Freshly transported into Central, I quickly learned how the square really was impacted by COVID. Doors closed to businesses I had seen for years, and talking to other small business owners in that neighborhood, it seems that may not be over. Being that it has been nearly five years since cannabis was legalized in Massachusetts, a neighborhood like Central Square should be thriving much more than it is and should also be recovering at a much faster rate. Recreational cannabis would play a huge part in bringing the square back to life. So I'm asking the council to support these businesses, all businesses. By not placing a moratorium on any business, we need the help. Thank you.
Is Lauren in the Zoom? No. Fred Meyer? You just put the little button right there.
Good. Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
I've spent a lot of time talking to friends and neighbors about the name change of the neighborhood this weekend. And the thing I keep hearing over and over is why the same name as the school? Of course, as you well know, the, there are no more school districts, and there isn't necessarily a close affinity between school and neighborhood. And most people seem to like geographical names, like the North of Harvard neighborhood or the Oxford Street Francis Avenue neighborhood or the Graduate Schools neighborhood, something like that. And of course, the majority of other neighborhood names are just that, North Cambridge, West Cambridge, so forth. They're useful for finding the place. And the other big complaint I'm hearing is on this so-called survey, you really couldn't vote. If you said, no, I'd like to leave the name as is, you then couldn't vote for any other name, which is directly contrary to our Cambridge tradition of proportional representation voting, where if your number one choice doesn't make it, maybe your sixth choice will. And I think that is the only way to bring this neighborhood together. I don't care what it decides, but I don't want people to feel that they have been led by a school-biased Agassi neighborhood council, which most people in the neighborhood have never heard of. And in, I spent a little time in the Francis Avenue area. I have never in many years on the Agassi council seen anyone from that neighborhood ever appear. So it's a biased survey. Give us a normal PR ballot.
Next up, we have Maya Counter, who's back on the Zoom.
Maya Counter, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
All right, we'll come back to Maya. We will go to Caitlin Coveney, followed by Patrick Barrett.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Coveney, and I live at 45 Blanchard Road. I'm in support of policy order 147, as I'd like to provide post-operative care to 1K9 in need of this care from my home, and I wanted to be present today to answer any questions. So I will remain on the Zoom call in case any come up that I am able to answer at any point. So thank you so much.
Patrick Barrett?
Hello, thank you. My name is Patrick Barrett, 41 Pleasant Street. Here to talk about the same policy order. Also, I'd like to say, great to see you guys in the flesh and in person. Much respect for coming in and taking the time to be here. Thank you. There is a lot wrong with our zoning ordinance, tiny little things, that inordinately punishes honest citizens. The person who went to the BZA to deal, to ask for a variance for post-operative care of a pet is something that any resident would be allowed to do for their own animal. Yet, Honest went to ISD, asked what the use was, was told it was a kennel use, and therefore had to go for a variance. This is nonsense. Long has there been a need for an abutment position at ISD to help people navigate our zoning code. It is obtuse, it is anachronistic, and for lack of a better word, in many places, it's just dumb. So I urge you to, you're going to forward this on to the ordinance committee and planning board. I'd also like to talk for a quick second, and I know, obviously, support, but about the cannabis industry. You guys put a moratorium in for two years. In that two years, oh boy, pandemic, all sorts of terrible things happening to businesses. Central Square exists right now in the form that it does because of the bid. The bid saved Central Square through the pandemic. We need more support from this city. You guys have $65 million to think about. You have a lot of restaurants and hospitality. Talk about equity. Who did not get a dime from the restaurant lease fund and won't because of lawsuits filed in Texas. Think about that. But to extend the moratorium in the name of equity when so many other issues in this city, our children, being the biggest one, go unanswered, is a huge mistake. Thank you.
We will go to Angela Bradway, followed by Brian McCarthy.
Hi, this is Angela Bradway. Thank you, guys, for taking my call. I am here to support the decision to not keep the memoratorium in place. I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. One second, please. I'm just going to grab my email up.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, so I'm voting against the moratorium because I believe that the businesses within the community really need all the help they can get at the moment. I'm currently a social equity participant, and I've seen all too well how hard it is for the participants to get up and running. I think keeping this memoratorium on task would prevent further businesses to get in and have a place within the community. I think that it's a big point to make, that there's a lot of people trying to put into funds to create for social equity, which I think is great. I think the willingness to work, the willingness for others to work with social equities is a big deal. So I think if you can get people on board, and, I'm sorry, my phone's going out, my volume's going out. But I want to make it a point that, you know, Jay-Z has a $10 million fund right now in our country for social equities. But I'd like to see some people step up, make some donations into the social equities so some of us can really get going and support the other local businesses around. Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Brian McCarthy, followed by Cheryl Patterson Monroe.
Brian McCarthy has not joined. Cheryl Monroe, please go ahead. You have the floor.
Hi, I want to ask the council to support the amendment for the tree ordinance. We are all for affordable housing, but we're not for affordable housing if it's going to impact, you know, the environment, because the tree is, trees are a part of our environment. It seems like the developers come along and they ask the city for certain things, especially when it impacts residents of low and income. They seem to always get what they want, and it seems like the residents don't have a voice. And to give preference to one developer and say, well, you guys can have, you know, the ability to do whatever you want when it comes to trees, and other developers come along and say, well, we want this and that, we just don't think that that's fair. In Houston, there's a big impact on what it looks like to have a development with no trees, and it looks really, really devastating. So once again, we do want the residents to have a voice, and I think that should be taken into consideration. It's very important that trees stay. Trees are environment. I know that everyone wants to protect the environment, but giving someone carte blanche to decide on the environment of trees is just not right. Residents have been working very well with CHA when it comes to trees with no issues. So I don't understand why the change that CHA is fighting the change of the amendment so hard when we've all been working towards new developments and coming to an agreement on the trees. Thank you for hearing me, what I have to say.
Maya Counter, we're going to go to next.
Good evening, honorable city council members, Mayor Sadiq and Cambridge community members. My name is Maya Hookstatis Counter. I am a Baldwin Elementary School and CLS graduate and a lifelong Cambridge resident with great appreciation for our city. About a year and a half ago now, I addressed the dilemma I was having as a young black girl living in a neighborhood named Dr. Louis Agassi here at the city council. Agassi was an influential 19th century biologist who rejected legitimate science and promoted racist theories about the inferiority of black people. I grew up thinking Cambridge was a liberal and informed haven. So it was disturbing, to say the least, to discover the history of the man my neighborhood is honoring by carrying his name. My elementary school was renamed the Mariah L. Baldwin School from the Agassi Elementary School. Baldwin was a prominent civic leader in the city of Cambridge and was also the first black principal in all of New England at the then Agassi school for several decades. Her dedication and passion to create safe and engaging spaces for students, despite all the odds stacked against her due to her race and gender, speaks to the kind of legacy our community should be honoring. It is important to note that her time was not much longer after Agassi's. So for those who simply say he was a product of his time, so was she, against so many societal odds. Since I started the initiative to rename our neighborhood, a team of Cambridge community developers, as well as Agassi neighborhood council members, have come together and engaged with the community in a thorough and educational open process. We have created an online contact encyclopedia that is filled with information regarding the history of the neighborhood, the legacies of Baldwin and Agassi, and we've provided information on other Cambridge neighborhoods like the port that have changed their name and much more. We've sent flyers to 98% of the neighborhood's household, inviting them to participate in a citywide survey. And the results of that survey have shown overwhelming support for the name, the Baldwin Neighborhood, following by variants, other variants of her name taking those top choice spots. The neighborhood and the city have spoken, and it's time to make an important history by changing the name and honoring Baldwin. Honorable city council members and Cambridge community members, I have immense hope that today you will vote to honor Mariah L. Baldwin by renaming the neighborhood after her.
Thank you, Maya. Next up, we have Dennis Silva, followed by Suzanne Bae.
Hello, I had submitted a comment because I didn't think I'd be available to speak. I'm, my name's Dennis Silva. I work at Miracle of Science. I'm a partner and an owner over there. And I just am in support of ending the moratorium on recreational marijuana policy, Agenda Item 11. I think that we, the Central Square needs to embrace every opportunity it can to welcome more people to the square. I think it'll benefit every business, from the bookstore to the bars. You know, more bodies in the square means more business for everybody. And hopefully, you know, we can see the benefit in opening up some of these closed storefronts. Fortunately, I'm actually at work right now, so I can't talk that much longer. But I just did want to step onto the floor real quick to support, you know, on my opinion, that the neighborhood would benefit from recreational marijuana and cannabis. So thank you for your time, and I'm going to go back to work. Thank you.
We will go to Suzanne Bae, followed by Stephen Adelson.
Thank you. Several things are included here. One, please vote yes for the amendment to cover the new tree ordinance so that we can have them for affordable housing buildings. Low residents deserve the beauty and health benefits of trees. And we've got a massive heat wave in Oregon and Canada and elsewhere, so we need it. Also, yes, on condo conversion, this is something that we've thought about for a long time. The ship has not sailed, even initiated. Even initiating a three-year moratorium on condo conversions could help. On cannabis delivery zoning, I would really hope that this could be nuanced, so it's not going to take place in the core squares, Harvard Square among others, because it competes with our concern with opening up more of the streets for pedestrian activities. So perhaps if this could be focused on those parts of the city with more parking and more availability. On the pilot program for cannabis funds for black and brown businesses, we've had a hard time getting kiosks and other things like that, push cards for these businesses in Harvard Square. So how it will work, I don't know, but I also would urge you to think big. Other states have done this. The cannabis funds are an incredible resource. Could we use them for universal pre-K, which really would benefit all of our, all of our children? It's one of the key issues in the Cambridge Community Fund report about that difference. Yes to people working remotely, and please also ask the city to do an analysis of this, because others are doing it. Payment on board is complicated. I would simply say that many of us volunteer an awful lot of time nationally and internationally outside of our work, and I urge you also, in looking at people, not to attack those who are yelling at the public through social media, attacking these boards or attacking people who speak. But thank you for all you're doing and have a wonderful vacation.
Stephen Adelson, followed by Lee Ferris.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Stephen Adelson, and I am the owner of Teddy Shoes Incorporated. My father started the business in 1957, and I joined the store in 1978. And I'm very honored to be in front of the council to present my view about Number 11, or Policy Order Number 11. I think it's a fabulous idea to stop the moratorium and allow recreational cannabis sales to take place in Central Square because so many businesses, like myself, have had to close and have had tremendous hardship during the last year. And we need more bodies, we need more people, we need more customers. And we need the opportunity for the square to get more customers, more business. And you, as the City Council, hopefully will understand that the lifeblood of our businesses depends on clients and customers, and these people have money to spend, and they will, they will support merchants that are in the square. And we need as many customers as we can to keep our businesses alive. It's really vital that you support this ordinance and allow Policy Order 11 to pass. I am very grateful to have the opportunity to speak in front of the council and as a neighbor of the Revolutionary Clin, Revolution Clinic. I feel it's a great opportunity for me to express my sincere gratitude for them to be in the square, to made a bit, make a big, a big, a big presence in the square and
Thank you for your testimony.
To support them. Thank you so much, and I hope it'll be great to present.
The next person who has signed up is Lee Ferris, followed by Flavia Hungaro.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great. Good evening, councilors. I hope you will consider residents of affordable housing and vote for a moderately strengthened tree protection ordinance where the city would provide additional funds to assist affordable housing developers to protect trees. As we all know, trees cool buildings and they clean the air, among many other benefits. Helping affordable housing developers preserve trees would greatly benefit lower-income tenants in those buildings. Some say that the amendment could lead to threats of lawsuits over the granting of permits. However, the amendment says, quote, "within the scope of the law," unquote, which would include the existing affordable housing ordinance. So I don't see how the amendment could be the basis of a lawsuit. I understand the amendment as saying simply that affordable housing developers would have access to expert advice and additional non-affordable housing trust funds if they want to use it to preserve tree canopy. Secondly, I want to speak on Policy Order Number 10. The Cambridge Residents Alliance has long supported a stronger condo conversion ordinance. Two-thirds of Cambridge residents are renters, and they need more protection from condo conversions that often displace tenants. This is one of the most important tenant protections that Cambridge can strengthen without having to ask permission from the state legislature. This amendment would increase, excuse me, this policy order would increase fairness and equity in our expensive housing market. Cambridge should have adopted a more robust condo conversion law years ago, and this is a chance to finally move forward. Please refer to the Housing Committee. Thank you very much.
Flavia Hungaro, followed by Saskia Van James, and then Leah Daniels.
Hello, my name is Flavia Hungaro. I would like to thank the city for the opportunity to give me the input today, and also thank the councilors for their efforts in creating equitable cannabis licensing implementation. Cambridge is one of the most influential cities in the country, and holding that weight on your shoulders, the opportunity to create equitable opportunities in cannabis licensing has not been shied away from. I appreciate that you have defended the need for lawsuits, and also your commitment not to back down. I have a concern that Cambridge will move forward for another period of time with Group A priority applicants, but excluding social equity, women, and minority applicants. I'm a part of Group A, as was done before. I was excluded for the first two years. Had I been aware, the economic empowerment was a two-week sign-up window, and I didn't really need to find a zone property under my control at that time to qualify. I would be an EE applicant as well. I understand that it has been discussed that the rest of Group A that has been left out could be given home delivery license opportunities alone, but that they should be excluded again from retail licensing opportunities in Cambridge. I'm here to share with you that my social equity company, also female-owned, has been renting a zone space in Cambridge in anticipation of the two-year exclusion period ending, and that further extending the time priority period before I can apply a cannabis business permit would be extremely harmful financially to my company and also my family. I've been worked, working hard through COVID to be able to hire an attorney and also work towards a retail approval for this coming September. Further, I support the end, the funding for both EE applicants and social equity applicants. Thank you for your consideration, and I have a good evening.
Thank you. Saskia Van James, and then Leah Daniels.
Hello, Saskia Van James. I live at 251 Garden Street. I am also the lobbyist and board member at the Massachusetts Recreational Consumer Council. And I spoke last week about our Policy Order 141 that's been put forward, and I also sent in a nice lengthy email. And I want, I just want to make sure that some of the things that I touched on in the email that I didn't have a chance to speak last week, that I'm speaking to you guys in regards to this week. So I want to clarify that this, this bill is being proposed to go to locally black-owned businesses and for reparations to go to locally black-owned businesses and towards economic empowerment applicants. The headline currently read in that Cambridge has proposed reparations towards black people. This is false. I repeat, this is false. Cambridge is not proposing reparations towards black people. Cambridge is, first of all, Cambridge is proposing reparations towards corporations, towards businesses, not towards people, that's first and foremost. Second of all, Cambridge is proposing reparations towards businesses that can be owned by anybody, not by just black people. These businesses can be owned by anybody. So you're calling it reparations, but the economic empowerment applicant has many, many white people. There's Asian people, Hispanic people, so many people are in that program. It is not primarily black people, nor only black people. And the criteria includes like the, you only had to live in a disproportionate area for five out of the past 10 years, that you could have just had a position where you served people who were predominantly impacted by the war on drugs. And let me also clarify that the criteria for the economic empowerment was developed underneath the pretense of the war on drugs, not slavery. So these are two totally different criterias being used within one. I, I do, for cannabis tax revenue to be used towards reparations for locally-owned, black-owned businesses in Cambridge is wonderful, and for a social equity program to be created is wonderful, but they're two
Thank you. Sorry, your time is up. Feel free to email us. Leah Daniels, followed by Heather Hoffman, and then Glenna Wyman.
Leah Daniels has not joined. Heather Hoffman, please unmute yourself, you have the floor.
Hello, Heather Hoffman, 213 Hurley Street. First, I'd like to talk about charter change. I know this, that in the first proposal about approving members of boards and commissions, that it leaves out the possibility of the council's not voting at all. So I hope that you'll address that before you move forward on this. With respect to a condo conversion ordinance, as people have said before me, Cambridge should have done this ages ago. And since Cambridge didn't, now is, is better than waiting yet longer. People are, are finding themselves homeless because of condo conversion, and we need to address that. With respect to condo repairs, I, I, I am confused. So I hope that there will be information in the discussion that explains why there, there aren't better ways to go about this. With respect to a stipend for members of multi-member boards, there was a comment that these people are currently a bunch of neighborhood defenders, to which I say, really? Do you ever attend their meetings? And finally, on the tree ordinance, I do hope that you will not exclude people living in subsidized housing. What do we owe the, the people who are, are living in public housing and places like that? What I have heard from those people themselves is that they think they deserve trees and nice things, and I agree with them. I hope that the council will agree as well. Thank you.
Glenna Wyman, and then Ahmed Law.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move to suspend the rules to reopen public comment signup for another 15 minutes because people are having trouble signing up.
So there's a motion before us to open public comment, reopen public comment for 15 minutes.
Madam Chair, do we not have to suspend the rules to take a motion to suspend the rules? I mean, do we have, do we not have to suspend the rules to interrupt public comment which is our process as opposed to waiting until it's over? In any case, I think we have to suspend the rules to then take the vote to extend. I have no problem extending. I just want to hear from you, other clerk. I believe we have to have a motion to suspend and then take a vote to extend.
No, there, there only needs to be a motion to suspend the rules to reopen public comment for 15 minutes. That'd be one vote.
Point of order, the, the motion is to reopen signup for public comment because people are not able to sign up before 16.
So that's
Point of order, I want to know how long that we would be extending public comment.
15 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So I'll just restate the motion for the council. The motion is to reopen public, is to suspend the rules to reopen the public comment signup period for 15 minutes. Pursuant to the rules, public comment signup ends at 6:00 PM. So if you vote yes on the motion, there'll be another 15 minutes that'll allow members of the public to sign up for public comment. If you don't open the rules, if you don't, if you vote no, and the no's prevailed, then public comment is, signup is closed, pursuant to the rules. On the motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yeah.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
So we will move to, we're gonna just turn the signup on again? Okay, so we're going to go to Glenna Wyman, and then that's, will be followed by Ahmed Lawal.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Glenna Wyman, I live at 86 Otis Street, which is the Putnam School Apartments in East Cambridge, a CHA elderly disabled slash disabled property. And I am speaking strongly in favor of Counselor Zondervan's proposed amendment to the tree ordinance to provide an avenue of guidance and financial support for affordable housing developers. I, I think it's, it's critically important. I've been shut down more than once at zoning board hearings, even raising questions about the trees, and was misled when I lived at Truman Apartments, as was the public, with regard to a tree that the plans showed had to be removed, and yet they were saying no trees were gonna be removed. And that tree could have been, if they had been honest and, you know, could have been moved to another site on the property. And this happened again, where I've been moved as a result of relocation to Putnam School, School Apartments, where I, you know, a tree that is, the height, reaches the height of the second-floor windows, which are tall windows, is gonna be removed, and I think it's, you know, highly possible that with some guidance and financial incentive, that tree could have been saved. And it really, there's very, there's only three trees on that property, and now one of them, the second biggest, is going. I also want to speak in favor of the amendment changes to the condo, condo ordinance, and I guess my time is up. Thank you.
Ahmed Lawal, followed by Grant Ellis.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, perfect. I'm hearing a lot of opposition about the moratorium, which, which baffles me, you know, because people are forgetting, the reason for the moratorium, you know, it's to give David a fair chance against Goliath, all right? COVID affected both David and Goliath the same. But cannabis, luckily, you know, it, it, the, the precedent was set that cannabis was deemed as an essential business. So really, Goliath hasn't been affected by COVID as much as a business that never opened its doors, all right? In the time since the inception of the moratorium, a year of it was lost to COVID. I don't understand why people are, are just completely brazen or mowing over that fact. We lost a whole year. Yeah, the moratorium was only for two years. We didn't, we don't, we didn't, we did not want the moratorium longer than that. Of course, we want to open our business and get going. But the moratorium was for two years, and in that two years, COVID was for one. A little bit longer, but definitely for a year. So, I mean, just, just simple mathematics, we lost a year to COVID. So the right thing to do would be to at least give us another year. I mean, I don't know how hard that is to, to understand, and I understand why, because the same people, the same people who are in support of foot traffic in the square now are the same people who opposed foot traffic when it was, when it was are the same people who opposed foot traffic when it was in benefit of equity applicants and social equity applicants and economic empowerment applicants. I mean, I'm trying to grasp this, and I know there are intelligent people in the room, and I know there are-
Thank you for your testimony. Grant Ellis, and then Justin Safe.
Hello, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for the time tonight. My name is Grant Ellis. I'm a disabled medical cannabis patient and also the president of the Massachusetts Cannabis Reform Coalition, the oldest cannabis nonprofit in the Commonwealth. I need to make something clear. This is not a moratorium, policy order number 11, on cannabis businesses opening. This is a moratorium on non-equity-owned cannabis businesses opening. The fact that this has been presented to you tonight in bad faith as a unilateral moratorium on adult-use businesses opening demonstrates the kind of insidious, subversive, and manipulative corporate profit-driven tactics that have no place in a public policy debate. There is no reason to tie the equity priority period, which it is continuing, to funding for equity companies. We should be funding those equity companies whether or not the priority period continues. We should not be using public policy to let corporate medical dispensaries buy their way into the third year of the priority period. Madam Mayor, I cannot believe what I'm hearing. And I also want to say, social equity companies should be included in the third year of the priority period. And Madam Mayor, I want to make something clear to the council. When Rev Clinic sued the city of Cambridge, they said their real motives in their lawsuit, in their motion for summary judgment. They said, in September 2019, defendant city of Cambridge enacted the racially discriminatory ordinance that stripped RMDs, including Rev Clinics, of their statutory right to convert. They lost on that point per 94G subsection 3, subsection A1I, on three different occasions, twice in front of the appeals court, once in front of the district court. And they said that the priority period is racially discriminatory against white business owners? That disgusts me. And that people would want to take money from them to let them buy their way into the priority period? It disgusts me. Please vote in favor of policy order number 11. Please extend the equity priority period. Thank you for your time.
Next up, Justin Safe, and then Keith Cooper.
Hi, Justin Safe, 259 Hurley Street. I want to speak in favor of policy order number 10, the condo conversion ordinance. I believe such an ordinance is long overdue in Cambridge, as others have said. Had a condo conversion ordinance been in place in years past, prior to the ongoing and massive increase in housing costs due to lack of adequate supply, and alongside the widespread condo-ization of Cambridge apartments, it would have helped to ameliorate the impact on many tenants who may have been displaced from Cambridge as a result of those conversions. I do, however, want to specifically question the thinking behind the creation of the condo conversion review board in the draft. It seems to me that the city can easily handle the issuance of condo conversion permits and enforcement. I have not yet heard any particular reasons why having the city play that normal role would be problematic. I do not see the need to create yet another board, even if the council confirms appointees. Some great points have been made recently about challenges that may arise from possible politicization in Cambridge of an appointment and confirmation process, as is included in the draft ordinance. But best practices for local government accountability are having fewer boards, not more, and having the council play a much more direct role in accountability for city operations. In my personal experience, the city council is much more aware and responsive to public engagement than any of our local boards or commissions. Citizens can't possibly be expected to monitor the many, many boards and commissions in Cambridge, even if the appointee selection process is arguably improved. The role of the condo conversion review board does not seem to involve any exercise of discretion, which is generally the reason why you would create such a board, except with regard to its own rules, policies, and procedures. And I also do not think it's appropriate for the council to so broadly and completely delegate the power to set its own rules, policies, and procedures to the board. In fact, it seems questionable at best that the board will be qualified for such work, given that the council itself often struggles with similar issues. Thank you.
We will go to Keith Cooper, and then followed by Hassan Rashid.
Can you hear me? Yes. My name is Keith Cooper, 81 Woodridge Road in Wayland, and the CEO of Rev Clinics at 541 Mass Ave in Cambridge. I'm not here to argue one side or the other tonight. I hear the anger and some of the emotion that we heard two years ago here. I want to start by apologizing for the unintended consequences of the lawsuit we filed against Cambridge, for being blindly insensitive to the message that it sent to the communities, to the council, to equity applicants, and most importantly, to my many minority employees. At the time, I felt we were making a rational business decision to let court weigh in on whether our rights were being taken away. I didn't at all appreciate my role in amplifying divisions in the community, not understanding the long history of racial inequities and how people feel and experience that today. Frankly, I didn't realize that until witnessing the reckoning of racial inequalities throughout the country and the world over, over the past two years. I did not realize that our part in this history really matters, and it matters right now. I'm hoping that we can, together, focus our attention and energy where it should always be and should have been, on making a positive impact in the community, ensuring the enduring success of economic empowerment licensees, as well as how Cambridge can continue to lead on issues of racial and economic injustice. I want you to know that we are listening, and I am learning. We dropped the lawsuit many months ago when we realized those actions were not at all helping people move forward. It was a step in the right direction. We focused a great deal of attention and financial resources over the last two years in helping equity licensees in other cities get open and to thrive, and we know that can work because we've seen it. I and Rev know that this apology is just another step in the further course of corrections, but it is the most important step we and I can take today. My door is open for a conversation and input, as I am here to learn how to be a better partner, participant, and ally in this process. Thank you.
Next up, we have Hassan Rashid, followed by Tabamosis.
Peace be unto you. Hello, everybody, I'm Hassan Rashid. I reside at 820 Massachusetts Avenue. When the city has funding to give to members of the community at large, I still think that ending and eradicating homelessness should be its highest priorities, at the top of the list of beneficiaries. Some years back, then-Mayor Maher tried to find black businesspeople here in Cambridge to work with. He couldn't find any. Now, all of a sudden, they're everywhere to be found. The city won't even consider granting free fishing license to its homeless and senior citizen population, but it can consider pursuing reparations for a questionable black business community. Ending and eradicating homelessness should be among the city's top funding priorities, objectives, goal. And this also applies to the Treasury, the just-recent-acquired Treasury funding of $65 million. When you consider, what you consider here is, in this agenda item, is equivalent to cherry-picking to see who gets reparation. I still say that a homeless trust fund is needed here in Cambridge. How can any decent and honest black businessperson humble themselves to accept such public funding when black men, women, and children are living, sleeping in on the main and side streets of Cambridge on its bricks and pavement sidewalks? Okay, finally, have you all forgotten the recommendations from the Ten Year Plan to End Homelessness and the recommendations from the 2015 Charette to End Homelessness? Thank you.
Next up, we have Tabamosis, and then Damon Hughes.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Tabba.
Hi, Tabba Moses, 70th Street, grew up in the poor. We've been watching this unfold for a while now. I think it's interesting to hear Keith Cooper, CEO of Rev Clinics, attempt to apologize, because I was on the opposite side of that fight, right? And I've watched him go to the SJC, which is the highest court in Massachusetts, right? And it takes a lot of money to get to that level, and we were the ones that said we're going to intervene on behalf of the community. I think sometimes it's too late to apologize, and it's about creating a systemic change, which maybe he can't be involved in because he's been on the other side of that battle.
Hi, Tabba. Will you just keep it to no personalities? Address all your comments to me.
Yes. So if we're talking about the moratorium, I'd like to break down how it's helped. Damon Hughes, Harvard Square, he would never have that opportunity. He'd never have opportunity for real estate. Chauncey, East Cambridge, he has an opportunity to open up a retail in East Cambridge. He would never have that opportunity. Even the people that are in support of revolutionary clinics have been given time to be able to move forward. GSO, we have since handed in our HCA. We're waiting to get that back. We are also getting funded by Chris Weber, the Weber Wild Social Impact Fund, and I'm working with Chris Weber to help other groups so that they can get funded, create and create real partnerships that represent true equity and really represent what we're trying to create in terms of having an equitable cannabis business in Massachusetts and around the country that really gives back to the people that need it most. So I think that you can stand here today and say that there's people's lives who are going to get changed, businesses that are going to get open because of the stance that you took, Madam Mayor, the stance that you took, and the stance that everyone who voted for the moratorium took in Cambridge, it's not only helping-
Thank you for your testimony. Tabba, sorry, the time's up. Damon Hughes, and then Danny DeGog.
Damon Hughes has not joined. Danny DeGoo, you were just in the room, if you can return.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for an opportunity to share with you a program from my foundation, The Sunshine of the Americas Foundation.
Danny, I'm sorry, you have to speak to items on the agenda. So if it's not on the agenda, and I'm not sure if we have information about your foundation, you can submit something in the future, and we can, you can maybe speak to it.
Is it possible, Madam Mayor, to ask for a vote to proceed? It'll only be two minutes.
So per the rules, you know, you're not allowed to speak to items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you anyway.
Sorry, Danny. Go ahead, Chauncey Spencer, and then Richard Harding.
Chauncey Spencer, please unmute yourself. You have the floor.
Hi, I apologize about that. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to speak about, because there's been a lot already said, regards to the moratorium. And I want to speak specifically about some, including social equity into that.
Chauncey, are you there? Cut out? I guess we can come back. Naomi?
He's still on and unmuted, but maybe having technical issues.
Okay. Chauncey, we'll come back to you. We're going to go to Richard Harding.
Hello?
Yeah, hello, Richard?
Hi, Madam Mayor, good evening. Just wanted to step in and speak about three particular things. This is on the cannabis ordinance. So one, I think, someone said it earlier, I think conflating the two issues, it was Grant Ellis around cannabis, it's just not the accurate facts around this matter. I would just say three things. One, not one economic empowerment group that was with us when the moratorium started has not moved forward in the right way. There will be many opportunities to buy recreational cannabis in Central Square soon, mostly by the EEs who have been afforded the priority period. I think, secondly, we have to talk about what this means in the time of COVID. There really, really was no moratorium. Let's just be fair, and we'll talk about Greensoul, my own company. So we were supposed to be in line, we had a meeting on, like, March 2nd or 3rd. Even though COVID supposedly stopped everything, we ended up having to Zoom anyway in August. So at the end of the day, even if you're just true to the ideals of the initial moratorium, it would cost at least for one year, if not two. I would also say that the whole notion that other businesses are being held up, if the Zondervan amendments, which include the social equity groups and people who win that program through the state-certified program, this would absolutely strengthen an already landmark decision by this Cambridge City Council affirmed by the courts in Cambridge, excuse me, in the state, that a moratorium, as suggested by the CCC, is the right thing to do. So, look, always up for a fight, not looking for it. At the end of the day, I think we're on the right side of this, as we were many months ago, and I look forward to having a debate about how we can strengthen this. Lastly, I would just say, we need to, at some point, have an autopsy on the cannabis process so that we can really fix this moving forward, and I look forward to the spirit of debate. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for the time.
Next up, can we go back to Chauncey? We can go to Ann Charlotte, if she's on the Zoom, or whatever you think is best, Naomi.
So Chauncey Spencer, you are unmuted. You would need to unmute on your end. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me okay now?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize. And so I just wanted to briefly speak about particularly the social equity issue to the participants that would be part of the potential moratorium. And I just want to say that there's been some type of misunderstanding about what the social equity program, what they're composed of, right? You know, some people try to look at it as something that is race-specific, and it's far from that. And the income requirements to get into the social equity program go as high as $300,000 per day, if you will. And, you know, the net worth of people in, say, for instance, the Boston, Cambridge black people particularly, in the Boston, Cambridge area, is roughly about $80. So to make a program that would have an income limit as high as $320,000 or more, in some cases, in some areas, is just not intentional. It is not designed for people who have been impacted by the war on drugs. And so what I want to do is ensure that the council focuses on those groups and try to be in some way, shape, or form cognizant of the fact that there are a large percentage of people in the social equity program who are well-positioned and not particularly black or brown. And so any ordinance that passed needs to be focused on that particular problem with the social equity program. And so anyone trying to business in the Cambridge area should be focused on that.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have Ann Charlotte. Hogstias?
Hello?
Hi. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, honorable members of the Cambridge City Council, Madam Mayor. Louis Agassi is far from alone in being an American white supremacist honored by having a building, a street, bridge, or in this case, a neighborhood named after him. Agassi's so-called scientific work on race was used to justify oppression by policymakers, and this part of his legacy lives on sadly. As a teacher at Leslie University, students new to the area often ask me who the neighborhood we're in is named after. Likewise, in my job as a Realtor, the same question comes up. It's embarrassing that a city like ours is honoring someone like Agassi by having a neighborhood named after him. Mariah Baldwin is worthy of this honor. Her work and her legacy bettered people's lives. It's long overdue that this name change happens, and it should be an easy decision. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone we've missed on the Zoom? Naomi?
We have Lauren Crowe.
Lauren?
Thank you. My name is Lauren Crowe. I live at 8 Museum Way, and I'd like to speak quickly on policy order number eight. I am emphatically for paying members of city boards and commissions currently staffed by volunteers. Relying on volunteers to do this work almost certainly has led to many of the more myopic decisions we've seen lately from the Planning Board, the BZA, and the- the BZA, and the Store Commission. We may be able to shortcut the debate over whether or not we should do this by looking back at the debate of our unpaid internships from the past decade. When you don't pay for work, then the only people who can afford to do the work are the already wealthy, privileged, who can afford to work for free. So I support the order, but I'd make two suggestions. First, I'd recommend adding the words "or salary" next to the second word "stipends" in the ordered paragraph. Often in hiring notice stipends imply small payments or reimbursements for incidental expenses or training positions. Few adults can work for the amount typically classified or advertised as stipends, even on a part-time basis. And there are likely some boards, like the Planning Board, where the work more resembles a part-time job than an incidental expenditure of effort. This sort of predictable, long-term labor should be treated like a job by an employer, in this case, the city, and should be compensated with salary and benefits befitting the work. The second point I'd make is a point of caution. We should be paying board members for their work, but recognize that doing so may lead to increased reliance on professional credentials when selecting members. There are boards in this city that ostensibly deal with narrow technical issues like historic architecture, zoning, and building permits, but in effect touch every aspect of life from housing, houselessness, displacement, transit, school selection, job access, and more. These mega-boards, like the Planning Board and the BZA, and to an extent, the Historical Commission, are currently staffed almost entirely with similarly well-educated technical professionals, credential in planning, architecture, the law, and history, and are well-suited to making decisions through those lenses, but sometimes blind to the impact of their decisions beyond their professional training and lived experiences. We need technical skills--
Thank you, Lauren. Sorry, I have times. It's two minutes today. Feel free to email us. Naomi, is someone named Kate Frank on the Zoom? Or Thomas Frank? Yes. Can we go to them next?
Kate Frank, please unmute yourself. You have the floor. Mayor Siddiqui, it appears they are unable to unmute on their end.
Okay. So that's all we have who has--
I'm unmuted. Why can't you hear me?
Okay, Kate, go ahead. We can hear you now. You have two minutes.
I apologize if it's something at my end. I'm a little bit of a klutz on digital matters. Do you want me to start over?
Yes, no, no.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Kate Frank. I live at 53 Crescent Street and have been a member of the Agassi Neighborhood Council since the late 1970s. My first 20 years in Cambridge, I had apartments in many different Cambridge neighborhoods. However, when I married, my husband was renting in the Agassi neighborhood. I was thrown into a hectic combination of work and family life and had no awareness of the historical significance of Louis Agassi's scientific work, nor his misguided propagation of theories concerning the racial superiority of people with Caucasian ancestry and the inferiority of those with African American-- with African ancestry. When I knew little about his background and writing, my new neighborhood name held no significance for me. However, once made aware, it became important to me to take steps to join others with similar concerns about his impact on the political practices on local state and national institutions, from city government to schools to the zoning practices that kept systemic racism and segregation in place. I'm very grateful to Maya Counter for challenging the status quo by asking the Agassi Neighborhood Council to consider replacing Agassi's name with that of Mariah Baldwin. Her request was a catalyst for me and other neighborhood residents of Caucasian background to become aware of the painfulness of the impact of his work and of our drifting along with the Agassi name. And we were sensitized to what it had to do with exposing systemic racism. I came to see--
Thank you, Kate, for your testimony. I apologize. It's two minutes. Feel free to email us the remainder of your testimony. So that is all who has signed up for public comment on a motion by Counselor Carlon to close public comment. We'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now have a submission of the record for the regular city council meeting held on May 3, 2021, on a motion by Counselor Nolan to accept the minutes. We'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan. Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
There are no reconsiderations. We're on to the city manager's agenda. Pleasure of the city council.
Madam Mayor?
I'll start with Counselor McGovern.
Number four, please.
Number four. Anyone in the room, in the chamber? Counselor Nolan?
Yes, number five.
Number five. Others?
Number six.
Counselor Simmons is number six. And Counselor Carlon, you pulled eight. We're gonna pull eight since we have to do a few things on it. So far, we've pulled number four. We've pulled number five. We've pulled number six. And we'll pull number eight. And hearing no other, we'll do a roll call on city manager agenda items number one, two, three, seven.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number four, a communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, city manager, relative to awaiting report item number 21-41, regarding report on closing Mass Ave from Prospect Street to Sydney Street on Friday and Saturday evenings. Counselor McGovern, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I spoke with the manager about this. We have a few things we want to go over, so I'm gonna exercise my charter right.
Okay. The charter right is exercised on item number four. We're gonna move on to city manager agenda item number five, a communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, city manager, relative to awaiting report item number 21-44, regarding determining what the safest and most effective mosquito management program is for Cambridge. Counselor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. This is a report that the council had requested on the mosquito management program. I very much appreciate the report and am glad to see that we are doing everything we possibly can to ensure that we are not using substances that are viewed as a threat to public health. My comment was actually gonna be that this needs to be propagated on the website because when you go to look, it's actually not there. And if I looked up to say, "What is Cambridge doing?", I wouldn't find this. And I think this will allay some people's concerns. I will say, of course, all of us don't want to ever use the trucks in the spring. However, we just got a report today. EEE, the triple E, is actually in Massachusetts. We know that there's a lot of public health issues that happen related to mosquito control. I am very grateful that the city is part of a task force that is doing everything it possibly can to ensure that we are not using the kinds of pesticides that cause long-term damage. But I do think we need to get the word out a little more carefully. And when I looked before, it's not on there. So let's make sure that it's easily accessible to people. That was just my comment, Mayor Siddiqui. I don't know if there's other questions people have.
I don't see any other comments from counselors. So we can do a roll call on placing this item on file.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number six, a communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, city manager, relative to awaiting report item number 21-7, regarding whether random check-ins and assessments of public and private for housing sites that were undergoing renovations were done for regular COVID-19 protocol safety checks. Counselor Simmons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to acknowledge the report back. This came forward in response to something that came up at senior advisory. A number of our seniors were concerned about the fact that people are coming on the premises and not being properly covered. I know that the ban, the emergency stay, has been removed. But I want us to remain diligent that there are concerns from folks that are in these buildings about who comes onto the property and are they protecting the health and well-being of the residents. So I accept the report, but I want us to continue to be vigilant around looking out for those people that live in those buildings and holding the workers responsible for how they treat the neighbors and how they conduct themselves when it comes to the health and well-being of the residents at those sites. A yield of love. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So we will place that matter number-- city manager agenda item number six on file and do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to city manager agenda item number eight, a communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, city manager, relative to recommendation from the Planning Board and communication from Community Development Department and the Law Department staff related to the cannabis delivery zoning petition. So we'll do a few things here. We have to suspend the rules to bring forward calendar item number seven. We have to amend calendar item number seven with the language in the city manager agenda eight item. We then have to ordain calendar item number seven. And then finally, place this agenda item on file. So on a motion by Counselor Nolan to suspend the rules to bring forward calendar item number seven, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
The calendar item number seven is before us. Pleasure of the city council. Questions? Is there a motion to amend calendar item number seven with the language in city manager agenda item eight? Counselor?
Yes, I will move that. I just wanted to clarify that the amendment, as I understand it, has a couple changes in the blue-lined or red-lined version, which has to do with the retail prominence of any kind of delivery businesses, I understand it. There's a couple changes. We would include those in the one that we would pass and then move that to ordination. Is that correct?
Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, through you, through the mayor, that I had a little bit of a difficult time hearing that because of the fan over here. But so that was a question regarding the language that the staff have provided. So this is language that incorporates comments that were made by the Planning Board and the Planning Board's recommendation. Most of those were clarifying comments. We also included some language in the criteria for special permit that pertains to the issue of ground floor activation. That was discussed at the ordinance committee hearing as well. Also, just to clarify the record from the last ordinance committee hearing, there are no proposed buffer requirements for a cannabis delivery establishment.
Counselor Nolan?
Thank you very much. If no one has another questions, I'd be totally excited to move this to propose that these amendments be incorporated.
Go ahead, Counselor Simmons.
Thank you. I don't have my notes in front of me, so I really apologize. I just wanted to be sure. Are we putting that same restriction in terms of a waiting period relative to cannabis delivery in couriers? And I ask that. I do apologize. I just don't have my notes in front of me. The reason why I ask that is I certainly would want that to be in the stipulation as well because we don't want Amazon getting into the cannabis delivery in courier business and beating out our black and brown business owners. I'm just curious, because I don't have my notes in front of me, if someone could just answer that question for me.
Ms. Roberts?
Thank you through you, through the mayor. I will try to answer that. So, part of that pertains to just, it's separate from the zoning ordinance, but in the state regulations for cannabis delivery establishments, there is a three-year sort of grace period or a period for economic empowerment applicants. I don't know much of the detail of that, but that is the case. If Cambridge were to take actions similar to what is currently the case for other types of cannabis establishments, that would be through a separate ordinance, the Cannabis Business Permitting Ordinance. This is just dealing with the zoning.
All right, thank you very much. Maybe that's something that we should have to bring up later on or if we had that discussion through the Ordinance Committee on a moratorium, that is something that we can bring up at that time. Thank you. A yield of applause.
So, on a motion by Counselor Nolan to amend calendar number seven with language in the City Manager's Agenda Item Number Eight, we'll do a roll call.
On the motion for amendment by substitution, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Present.
Present. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one present.
Now, we'll move on to ordination. If there's no questions, on a motion by Counselor Nolan to ordain this item. Oh, I see Counselor Zondervan's hand up. Go to Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And quickly, just a point of order, we're moving this to a second reading. Is that correct?
It says, we passed it to a second reading on June 14th, and so it can be ordained tonight.
Okay, thank you. And I just did want to briefly respond to my colleague's question about a preference period. So, the mayor and I met with Solicitor Glow this morning, and we are working on some language to update the Cannabis Business Permitting Ordinance. And we have a policy order later on the agenda to call for an Ordinance Committee hearing to discuss that. So, we will be considering a preference period for delivery operators at that time as well.
Seeing no other hands up and no testimony from the council on a motion by Counselor Nolan to ordain calendar item number seven as amended, we can do a roll call.
On ordination, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Present.
Present. Counselor Zondervan. Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one present.
And now, we will place City Manager Agenda Item Number Eight on file.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to the calendar. We have four charter and items, so we'll go through each. First one is regarding an item from last week, City Manager Agenda Item around the appropriation for $65 million-plus regarding the American Rescue Plan Act. This was exercised, the charter item was exercised by Counselor Zondervan. Counselor Zondervan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a brief communication with Mr. Cale, but we didn't get an update yet on this appropriation. So, I would love to hear from the City Manager and Mr. Cale if anything has changed from last week.
City Manager?
Through you, Madam Mayor. We gave an update in the Weekly Digest, but we're prepared to get into more detail tonight. And I'm going to turn it over to Dave and to Michelle to go over the specifics. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Zondervan. As we noted in the-
Mayor Siddiqui.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. Could you ask people who are speaking to speak very close to the microphone? With the fans, it's sometimes difficult to hear.
Can you get really close? Thank you.
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Zondervan. As we noted in the Weekly Digest on Friday that was sent to the City Council, we, Michelle, Kay, and a few others, did do some research. And basically, what we had, as we promised at the council meeting last week, and basically based upon federal and state guidelines, basically, the grant needs to be accepted in its entirety. And there's no other mechanisms to do that. And it can't be put into a free cash account. It can't be segregated. So, basically, this grant is a federal grant and needs to be accepted in its entirety.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Mr. Cale. So, we heard that Boston and Somerville are doing some different processes. Are you aware of that? And can you speak to that at all?
Again, if it's a process to utilize the funds, I'm not directly involved, but in terms of the process to accept the grant, they would have followed the same guidelines that they need to follow in terms of accepting the federal funds. The process of how the funds are expended and what input one gets is up to each community.
Counselor Zondervan. And then, we'll go to Vice Mayor Malin, Counselor Simmons, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to Mr. Cale. So, I understand what you're saying, but that doesn't prevent us from having a process where we would still have the council vote on further appropriations of these funds, right?
Through you, Madam Mayor. This is a one-time appropriation. So, you have to appropriate the $65 million. That's the ruling we got. We're pleased to announce that we've already worked with the two finance chairs. And after listening to the council last week, have set up a finance committee meeting to start discussing how we're going to spend the money. But it is a one-time dollar amount appropriation. And again, Somerville and Boston are may have former governments, and often what they do doesn't necessarily translate what we do. But in terms of our format, this is an appropriation. And then, we will start the process to discuss how the money is going to be spent, which we know is a concern of the council and rightfully so. So, we've already started to work with the two chairs to discuss this discussion. Mr. Cale could probably tell you when the first meeting is, but that is the process that we are recommending and working on.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll yield to my colleagues.
We'll go to Vice Mayor Malin, then Counselor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, to the City Manager and your team. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that this is the way we generally appropriate federal funding through a grant process, much like we did the CARES Act funding. Is that correct?
Yes, you are correct.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. So, the CARES Act funding, in my mind, feels like it was very reactive. It was emergency-based, but it was appropriated in this way. The grants were there. We appropriated it, and then we spent the funding. I think there has been some conflation a little bit on the two things that we're talking about right now. The first thing is the appropriation of the funding, which we need to accept from the federal government in order to have it here in Cambridge to then disperse. The second piece of what we're talking about is the method by which you just described, where the finance chairs have set up a meeting on July 27. Thank you very much to the finance chairs and to the City Manager and his team for putting that together quickly. I know we talked about this last Monday night, that we needed to put something together very quickly because as we're seeing in other communities, Somerville, Boston, Pittsfield, Worcester, people are putting together very different processes. Framingham is putting together a public survey of their residents. This will be an opportunity for the City Council to sit with the City Manager and his team to try to figure out what we can do with this funding and how and what a process might look like. I just want to make sure of two different things. One is the appropriation of this money, receiving it from the federal government, just like we do with CBG grants, the CARES Act funding, and any other grant funding that comes from the federal government. We appropriate it here as a City Council. And then, we are going to have a separate process by which we decide what to do with the $65 million within the parameters of how the federal funding is being written so that we can use it to respond to the COVID pandemic. So, I'm very comfortable moving forward and accepting this tonight and appropriating this funding. And I look forward to the larger conversation, talking about that laundry list of items that the department has put together based on City Council priorities and what's come up over the COVID pandemic to really come up with an equitable recovery and response. So, as I said last week, I'm comfortable with this process, and I look forward to having that larger conversation at the Finance Committee. Thank you again to the chairs for putting together something and putting onto the calendar very quickly. So, thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
Madam Mayor, I just want to-
City Manager.
Thanks to Vice Mayor. She probably said it clearer than we have said it in the past. So, thank you. That is exactly how it works and couldn't have been said any clearer. So, I appreciate that.
We're going to go to Counselor Simmons, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, Counselor Carlon, and then Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I take the floor to ask my colleagues to pass this appropriation order. As the Vice Mayor said, as the City Manager said in his weekly, we have to accept this money. We don't want to lose any opportunities to take full advantage of this money, to do whatever we need to do. And that may cover a wide variety of things. And that's why the chair and I worked diligently to get something on the calendar as soon as possible, working with the finance people so that we can have that conversation to fully explain to the City Council and to our residents. Because as you heard a little bit from public comment, some people are confused about what this money can be used for. And we need to have that conversation. And I would respectfully ask that if the council would vote to accept this money, then we can have a robust conversation about what we can do, what we need to do, what we will do. And we will engage our colleagues and the community to the degree possible so that we can use this money effectively and efficiently. So, again, I would respectfully ask my colleagues to vote to accept the appropriations so that we can move forward, have this conversation, and then make some very wise decisions on how the money should be allocated. Thank you, Madam Mayor. A yield of applause.
We will go to Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to the City Manager and Mr. Cale. I just want to try to make sure I understand that because to me, it's the process of accepting versus appropriating is important here. So, with the vote tonight, I get that we'll have another process in the Finance Committee to talk about this more. But after we vote tonight, will there be more votes that the council will have to take about specific appropriations? I guess that we'll have a conversation about it. But is this the only vote? Or are we going to have more votes about specifically what this funding will be used for?
If, through you, Madam Mayor, if the City Council appropriates these funds today, they will be set up on the books. And basically, as noted by Counselor Simmons, the City Manager has committed to have a public process with the City Council. And again, I think what we end up spending the money on will be publicly displayed and is part of our reporting. So, it will be transparent, and I think, but there will be no additional votes on specific projects.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thank you. So, what I'm hearing is that after tonight, the City Council doesn't have any more formal authority over how this money gets spent. We'll get to weigh in and give some suggestions, and hopefully that gets taken into account. But after tonight, we've given up all our authority. And so, I'm not comfortable moving forward with that at this time. The process is still a little confusing, but it seems like we're conflating the pieces of accepting and appropriating. I was looking at some comments from the Budget Manager in Somerville, and it's that we wouldn't get away with a blanket appropriation like this of all of the $5 million. I'm a little confused about why we're trying to do that process here. And as the council's elected body, we should have more authority about the specifics on this. It's a lot of money. It's about 10% of our overall budget. So, I'd be supportive of not appropriating the full amount tonight. I think we need to weigh in on this somewhere before we authorize this all and sort of let it go ahead and be spent.
I guess-
City Manager?
All I would say is I think when it comes to municipal finance, the city of Cambridge is the example of any city in the state on how we run our finances. I'm proud of it. My record speaks for itself. I've told the council I will work closely with them to make sure how this money is spent. I would hope that would be enough authority, and that's how I would look at it.
Through you, Madam Mayor, just to remind the council, this is no different of a process that the council goes through every week when it accepts and appropriates grants every week. So, this is no different. Obviously, the volume of the grant is higher, but it is no different than what we did for the CARES money. It's no different than what we did for the block grant money to support homeless, I'm sorry, housing programs and small business programs. It's no different than what we did when we received the IRA money several years ago. So, this is not a change. This is the consistent way that the city implements grants. So, again, I don't think we're deviating because frankly, we can't deviate. So, but again, I think the complexity of this grant and how it needs to be sent within the specific categories is something that we will work through with the council and the public. And again, I think that we will be very transparent about what gets funded. So, I don't think that that will be a mystery to anybody who would like to know how this city spent the $65 million.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, before I move on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Counselor McGovern had his hand up.
Okay. Well, no, actually, it's Counselor Carlon and then Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We should recall that we got an extensive list last week on how the administration believed the funds could be used and invited us to comment on that. So, both Co-Chair Simmons and I encourage all the counselors to review that list. And if you have thoughts, I mean, I proposed one to Mr. Cale just yesterday, no, last week, and you know, he questioned it. So, the point is, if you have thoughts, please submit it to the co-chairs, and we will start that process and make sure the administration is aware of it. So, I assume, through you, Madam Mayor, to the manager and his team, that it is just like the budget. We have priorities, and we have COVID priorities. And that somewhere within that range, most, if not all, of these funds will be associated. And that's what we'll talk about. And there could be questions that we could bring up. I brought up new open space in areas that are depleted and therefore, they have no meeting places. You know, that might not be qualifiable. Although, I also read that increasing the police department's review in another city was considered it by the federal government. So, it all depends. It's a dialogue, and we'll have that extensive dialogue. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We'll go to Counselor McGovern and then Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Thank you to the finance chairs. Thank you to the City Manager and everyone who's worked on this. I do have some questions and still some things that concern me a little bit. First, just a question on the process. We had passed a policy order asking for a special meeting to be held just to try and talk about and better understand how this whole thing works before we get into a conversation about how we're going to spend the money. Is that going to happen in these finance meetings? Or are we going to do that special meeting first and then go and then have the finance meetings? Where does that, sort of, where does that sit?
Through you, Mayor, are you talking about, I know we had talked to the co-chairs during the budget process, and we thought it would be better to have that workshop prior to setting the tax rate in the fall. And so, based upon calendars, we can do that. But I think-
No, through you, Madam Mayor. No, I'm talking specifically, and maybe I'm, maybe my brain has melted, which would be like every other part of my body at this point. But we had passed a policy order, I believe, to have a special meeting or a public hearing to just talk about this money and the parameters and how it can be spent and what it can and can't be spent and just to better understand what we're, what we can and cannot do before we get into the conversation about how, what we want to spend it on. So, I'm just trying to figure out, I don't care whether that happens in a finance meeting or another meeting, but I do think we have to, I think we have to have at least a preliminary conversation just about this grant, this money, and the parameters around it before we get into, and so I'm just wondering, is that, are we going to do that conversation in a finance meeting? Or are we going to go through and have the special meeting that we had voted to have?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor McGovern. We did outline the parameters briefly in the cover letter from the City Manager, but as part of the presentation on the Finance Committee meeting, we will have an overview of what are the budget categories and the applicable, acceptable uses for the grant. So, we intend to do an overview with the City Council as part of the Finance Committee meeting.
Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, through you, Madam Mayor. You know, the other question I have, I mean, we've talked about how this is sort of similar to other things that we, other grants that we've accepted. You know, there's also when the manager wants to appropriate money from free cash, let's say, to a particular item or a particular issue, that does come before the council for a vote to say, do we appropriate this money or do we not appropriate the money? But that's not going to happen in this case? I mean, let's say we go through this whole process and we decide we want to spend $10 million on X. If, or the manager comes forward and says, I want to spend $10 million on X, the council, we can say, yeah, we like it or we don't, but it's more, but there's no actual, we don't actually get to have any concrete say in that? Or the manager can just go ahead and spend it?
Well, first of all, this is not a free cash appropriation. But secondly, it's no different in reality because the council, when it gets a free cash appropriation, votes the appropriation for the purpose of the free cash appropriation. The council tonight is, hopefully, will vote the appropriation of the grant with, again, the information that we've highlighted about what the parameters are contained in the federal guidelines of what the money can be used for. So, there really fundamentally isn't a difference because you don't go back and take another vote on a free cash appropriation once you appropriate it.
Counselor McGovern.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Is there, is there a reason that we have to vote this appropriation tonight? Is, I mean, the money's there, right? I mean, is it, is there some timeline or something that, you know, could this, could this sit on the table till we have the finance meeting? At least to kind of have a broader conversation about this and then vote it? Or is there some reason why this has to be done now?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor McGovern. Through you, Madam Mayor, to Councilor McGovern. I, I think a couple of things. Again, we're trying to establish this appropriation so it can be spent. So that needs to be done. And secondly, there is an interim reporting requirement that we need to meet at the end of August. And so we have a lot of work ahead of us, not only with the city council and the public process, but to basically do the reporting that's required for the grant. I would also just say that we've noted that there is a collaboration component that the city manager will comply with in an enthusiastic way. The sooner we start coming up with ideas, the sooner we can start implementing them. And for some of the affected communities, waiting is probably not a good thing based upon some of the pain that we see in the community. And so appropriating the money and coming through a plan and ideas that are vetted and are approved basically allows the money to go out the door, which is the reason why the feds did this grant in a different kind of way, in a sense, gave parameters with broad flexibility so that the money could go out the door as quickly as possible. So waiting just delays that process to help folks who would be impacted or positively affected by the grant. Secondly, thirdly, I will just say this. I think, I think we take pride in our fiscal and programmatic management and that includes the city manager and the city council. I think not approving this grant tonight, which frankly is a routine task, especially when you add on to it the process that we're going to do to have a public input process, I think frankly doesn't bode well for our view by the rating agencies. And as you recall, when you read the rating agency's report back in the spring, one of the things they highlighted was our fiscal and programmatic management. And I think not accepting a $65 million grant in a timely manner so we can adhere to our reporting requirements and to get the process done so that we can get the money out the door doesn't necessarily bode well in terms of our overall strategies that's been successful for several years.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor McGovern, Michelle had something to say, so I'm just going to let her, Michelle?
Through you, Madam Mayor, Councilor McGovern. It is, we have already gone through the process of accepting the grant, meaning that we had to go through a process to actually apply for the grant. And the only person in the city that is legally able to sign off and accept this grant is the city manager, which is how we ended up getting our disbursement of our first allocation. So this basically is for us to tell, to explain to you what the grant is. And your job is to accept it as a council so that we can move on and get, work with you to come up with the programs that we need to do to disperse the grant. But there is urgency in it. That's the whole reason why they gave it to us the way they did.
Councilor McGovern?
Thank you. And thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll finish up. I know there's more people, more hands up. You know, I appreciate all of that and, you know, and I do, I do think we will have some good conversations about this. I just really want to say, you know, for the record, that I really hope that we have, you know, that our robust community process isn't just finance committee meetings. You know, when you look at what other communities are doing to really reach out to the community and hear from them, especially the community, communities that have been most impacted by the, by COVID and that have only exacerbated all the inequities that existed before COVID. So I'm really hopeful and, and, and want to make sure that we do something more ambitious than sometimes we often do around community process. And I also hope that, I know there was some discussion at the last meeting that, you know, some of this money may go to replenish some of the free cash that was spent on, you know, during the COVID crisis. I actually hope we don't do that. I think this is an incredibly unique opportunity to really do some bold initiatives that could really not just get us back to where we were, but make us better than where we were. And so I really, I would hate to see, you know, half this money or so go to just replenishing the coffers. I think this is a tremendous opportunity and we can't squander it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Uh, through you, Madam Mayor, I just want to let Councilor McGovern go. I agree. And this is about appropriations of money, not replenishing lost revenue. So I know that's a concern. It's an eligible concern in terms of ability. But at this point, that is not our intent. Not that we think it would be the council's intent. So, of course, I never want to say never to anything, but that is not, clearly not our intent at this point in time. Now, should it be, to be very honest? So I agree. Thank you.
We'll go to Councilor Nolan.
Just, just to clarify that, it's very clear within the guidance given by the feds that this is not meant to replenish pension funds. It's not meant to replenish reserve balances. It is to be used for the items that are listed in the broad category. So no, that will not replenish our free cash.
Councilor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. Through you. I basically feel that I have learned and understand and support everything all my colleagues have said. And here's what I think we're hearing, that if we vote no, we're rejecting 50, $65 million. That there is a timeliness here. It might be okay if we waited, but it might not be. So this is accepting a very, very large grant. So in a way, it's the same process, but fortunately or unfortunately, it's not a usual process that it's $65 million. And I really appreciate the explanations about what we can use it for. I was very happy to see, of course, that it can be used to fund broadband, that that's a utility, that that's an infrastructure need. Broadband is listed as one of the possible uses of this. I hope it's not, I hope it's broad broadband and it might even be able to do the RFP for broadband that we've been waiting for, for a long time, to really strengthen it and make sure we get there. What I'm also hearing, and I want confirmation, which I've heard both the city manager and I believe the whole team here say, is there is a commitment to listen to council priorities. These will not be dispersed without a discussion with the council. And as I think the vice mayor, Council Simmons, finance co-chairs, and also Council McGovern just said, we also need a broader community process, right? I woke up to the globe today. In Providence, the city council is actually voting on the allocation of these funds. So it is a little bit tricky, as the vice mayor said, cities across the Commonwealth are doing this. And then you read about Providence and they changed their vote based on some community feedback for a water fire. So it's just an example that we have to be very clear that when we have these conversations, we are responsive to the needs in the community and that we may not always know the first round. And then we need to make sure that we listen really closely so that we can use these funds the best that we can. So I understand the discomfort of people to say, oh, my gosh, we're just giving folks a blank check. We're just accepting it. But I am going to assume this memo will be guiding us. It is a very long list of very important means. I'm not sure we can fund them all. If we could, that would be great. I certainly think having the two meetings about where we understand how it can be spent and then a very close collaboration to ensure that the council and the community knows is something that's going to be critically important for all of us as we move forward. Because we're not out of the woods yet. We still have a lot of the needs in the community. And we need to be able to use this to move forward in a pretty thoughtful way. So that was, I'm seeing a lot of nods, so I'm, I'm heartened by that. And I also recognize it's, it's challenging sometimes to say, boy, can't we hold off until we know more? And, and what I'm hearing is we're in a position where we really do need to move forward with an appropriation.
Through you, Madam Mayor.
Through you, Mayor Siddiqui.
Uh, the Councilor Nolan, I really appreciate the comments because one of the things that we have to be careful here is we got to really determine what is eligible expenses. And I can tell you, and I know Michelle doesn't like hearing this necessarily, but there's nobody who understands this anyway to Michelle Kincaid. All our grants that we've got from the state and federal government related to COVID-19 have come back perfectly because of the level of attention in detail. The departments expend, but mostly her at the helm. So I'm incredibly confident that when we make recommendations, it'll be recommendations that will be allowable expenditures and we'll work with the public and the council so we're all on the same page to say, when we say we're doing something, no one's going to come back and say, well, that's not eligible. We'll know that and that's, Michelle will be on top of that. So I want to make that clear. When we present something, believe me, we'll be ready to say it's a valid expense. Thank you.
So we have a few hands up and we've already gone around one, so please be brief. We have a lot to cover. And I think from, based on what I've heard, it seems that, you know, I think we can go ahead and vote on this, do a roll call and see where the votes land. I'll go to Councilor Carlon and then Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, Councilor Zonovan and then Councilor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will be brief. And we've had recent studies, which you are very aware of, Cambridge Community Foundation, the nonprofits. And I would imagine part of that would be part of what we'll review as well. What makes sense in those programs? So both of those entities are present in this room with that in mind. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler and then Councilor Zonovan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple more questions to try to understand this. From, what, I was trying to understand, Ms. Kincaid, you had said only the city manager can accept the grant and the council has to help disperse it. So am I right in understanding the city has already accepted the grant?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The city manager has to accept the grant and so does the city council. The city manager has done his piece in applying for the grant and fill in all the financial obligations. So that's how we were able to get a portion of our money. But if you decide that you don't accept the grant, then we will be forced to send the money back.
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler?
Is it possible to do different votes for accepting and appropriating the grant?
No, you can't. So you accept the grant and then we follow the grant guidelines from the federal government, which will be given out to all of, everyone in the room when we explain it to you and what we can spend the money on. We will sit and we'll go through it with you and the community. Why would we spend money on something that the community didn't want? This money is for us to ramp up the economy, help the people that have been hurting the most through this whole pandemic. And it just means that we have to work together. But as far as appropriations go, the federal government has given us the types of expenditures that we can spend it on, okay? And we just have to go through and look at our list and see what everybody comes into consensus with. But this is a grant. It's not general fund money. So the laws are different around it and that's it. Sorry.
Senator Sabrina Wheeler?
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I would really rather have a, if it's not possible to do it separately, accept it and then vote to appropriate later. I guess that's the process. And I do think it's, it's different than other grants the city accepts, which are, you know, usually for a few thousand or maybe tens of thousands, but aren't $65 million. It's more equivalent to the budget and with the budget, we get, you know, a very specific reporting about how much is going to salary, how much is going to equipment, specifically, you know, how many new positions it's going to create. Do we know here how many new positions, how many jobs in the city this is going to be funded on? Or do we not know that?
Through you. Go ahead, Michelle.
Go ahead, Michelle.
This grant is not for positions. This grant is for programs, okay? So we, if we needed help in dispersing the grant, as far as like help hands-on for reporting, you could use some of the overhead for that, but we don't, we will not do that. We have never charged a grant like this with overhead costs. We've always, in these direct grants, spent it on the items that they basically told us that we could spend it on. So most of these programs are for health, public health issues, negative economic impacts, disproportionately impacted communities. There's all types of expenditure types that you can spend on that. So they're telling us how to spend it. We're not going to create any positions with this. All we're going to do is put the money out there into the community. But we also need to be responsible about doing that and reporting back what we need to report to the federal government.
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler?
Thanks. I understand that it wouldn't be used to create permanent positions, but I imagine we could hire folks to help with parts of it. I mean, do we know how much would be spent on, on equipment versus programming cost? Do we have that kind of breakdown with this guy?
So just, just to be clear, I think through you, Mayor, is we've gotten this allocation. We've been given broad categories for which we can spend the money. What we were just spending the last half hour talking about is how we actually specifically, programmatically, spend the money that fits within the categories outlined by the federal government. So the answer is, is it's not like another grant where there's some specificity about why you got the grant. This one is, you're getting this grant funds, you can spend it in these categories. It has to be within the categories, but that's for you to determine as long as you spend it within the appropriate categories outlined by the treasury. So it is a little bit different, but there is no, there are no set expenditures at this point. That's why we're going through a public process with the council to define what are the specific items that we want to fund and to make sure that those specific items fall within the broad categories issued by the treasury.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I think that's the key. We're coming to the council for the dollar amount. We have not gone to the finance committee. We have not gone to the public. So no, we don't know what we're spending the money on. We know the categories because that's what's eligible. But to have those numbers would, then we'd be no process with the public if we've already predetermined that. So that has been determined. And fortunately, because of the talent we have in fiscal staff, when we get these type grants, we do not bring on additional people to help administer them at the expense of the grant. We've been able to do it internally.
Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, I have to move on. So take your point and then I have to move on.
Thanks. Yeah, the last point was that, you know, after the council's elected to have a say on the budget and after tonight, we don't have any more say in terms of, you know, a million dollars goes here, $5 million goes there. I appreciate the, that will be consulted and that there will be a public process. But when we vote to appropriate, we're not just accepting the check, we're signing the check. And as, you know, someone who's responsibility is to sign the check, I would like some more specificity and, you know, knowing what I'm signing for. So I obviously don't want to vote no on this or reject this, but, you know, we can table this for now. So I would make a motion for that until we've been able to have some more of those discussions. And if the votes aren't on the council's table now, I understand and we can move on, but that would be my motion.
Through you, Mayor, just again, that is no different than what the city council does with every other grant it appropriates every week. So this is no change in our normal course of business.
We'll go to Councilor Zonovan and then Councilor Simmons. And then we'll have to vote on the motion before us. We'll have to.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, to the staff and city manager and staff. I do appreciate the explanation and I fully understand it. And, and I don't think, certainly I'm not making any argument that it's different procedurally from any other grant, but there is a difference in granularity. So my question is, could you put forward an appropriation for $10 million to be spent on the following five things, $2 million each? And then we vote on that and then a week later you could come back and say, we want the appropriation for five more million dollars out of the 65 total and we're going to spend a million each on these five items. Is that not possible? And if so, why not?
Through you, Mayor Siddiqui, to Councilor Zonovan, that is not possible.
Councilor Zonovan?
Because as, through you, Mayor, as we have explained earlier, basically the grant is for $65 million. You need to appropriate and accept the total grant. It's not on a piecemeal approach and it needs to be done at one time so that we can basically do our reporting and to basically verify that with, to the feds, that the council and the manager have appropriated and accepted the grant in its entirety. It cannot be done piecemeal.
Councilor Zonovan?
Okay, thank you. I understand. I will be voting for the motion. Thank you.
Councilor Simmons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to talk about procedurally thing. I'm hoping that we can move this forward. I hope that the council will stand together and move this appropriation so that we can have a full discussion with only this item before us in the finance committee. I just wanted to say procedurally that the chair and I will be looking for the questions that we would respectfully ask that you send them to the clerk. The clerk will then forward them to us. And I just look forward to having this opportunity to have this discussion on a granular level on how we'd like to see this money dispersed. But the most important thing is we don't vote to accept it. We can't talk about how we're going to spend it. And so it's just. And so it, uh, it's just imperative that we move this forward so that we can move on to the next step, which is this discussion. And again, I would just reiterate that we, the chair and I look forward to hearing your, seeing your questions. Please forward them to the clerk, who will indeed send them to, uh, all of us, and the chair and I could maybe work toward, maybe giving some parameters about when those should come to the clerk and then to us. So Madam Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'd move you about.
So there's a motion before us, Counselor Simmons, from Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, that was to table this, so we have to dispose of that motion, uh, and depending on where that goes, um, if it fails, then we can go to your motion to adopt and do a roll call on the appropriation. So that's the order of business. So Clerk Wilson, there's a motion by Counselor Sabrina Wheeler to place, uh, this city manager agenda item on the table.
On placing Charter Item Number One on the table. Counselor Carlo.
No.
No. Vice Mayor Mellon.
No.
No. Counselor McGovern.
No.
No. Counselor Nolan.
No.
No. Counselor Simmons.
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
No.
No. Motion fails. Two in favor, seven against.
We move to Counselor Simmons' motion to do a roll call on the appropriation.
On accepting, uh, adopting the appropriation, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I, I've seen Counselor Simmons, uh, Counselor Carlo.
I was just going to request that we move reconsideration on this issue.
So we have a motion to move for reconsideration, hoping the same will not prevail. I think that's the language.
Madam Mayor, I was going to move the same thing, like minds think alike.
Finance co-chairs, yeah. So we'll, um, Clerk Wilson, if you can do the, the roll call.
So the first vote will be on suspension of rules so that the council can move to reconsideration. A yes vote will allow the council to move to reconsideration. A no vote will stop the process right here. The second vote will be on reconsideration. A, a yes vote will, uh, keep reconsideration open until, um, Wednesday. A no vote will make the vote on Charter Item Number One final tonight. On suspension of the rules to move to reconsideration, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against. The next vote is on reconsideration. Again, a yes vote will keep the matter open until Wednesday. A no vote will finalize the vote tonight. On reconsideration, Counselor Carlo.
No.
No. Vice Mayor Mellon.
No.
No. Counselor McGovern.
No.
No. Counselor Nolan.
No.
No. Counselor Simmons.
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. No. Counselor Toomey.
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan.
No.
No. Mayor Siddiqui.
No.
Motion fails. Nine against.
We now move on to city manager agenda item number, I'm sorry, on Charter Right Number Two, um, and this is around a item that the city manager is requested to directly appropriate city staff to determine the feasibility of establishing a pilot operations program. This was, uh, Charter Right was exercised by Counselor Zondervan, and then I will go to Counselor Simmons. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had proposed amendments to the motion makers. Um, I, I believe Counselor Simmons would like to, uh, put it on the table so we can, uh, continue that discussion, so I, I will yield to her.
Counselor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to my colleague. Uh, we've had, Counselor Zondervan didn't move his charter right, and I have, through emails, discussed this and looked at amendments that he has brought to the floor. Uh, I've also worked with Counselor Nolan, I thank Counselor Nolan, and we've looked, worked on amendments, and I just thought it was best to do it, to save the time to try to do it right, where we could, the three of us could get together, work out some language and bring it before the council. So I respectfully ask that my couns, my colleagues vote to lay this on the table, and we'll bring it back at the meeting in August. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You have the floor.
On Counselor Simmons' motion to move this item to the table, we'll do a roll call.
On placing Charter Item Number Two on the table, Counselor Carlo.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Uh, yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yeah.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We are now moving on to the third charter and item around a, uh, filing a home rule petition around, um, uh, charter, charter changes. So this was exercised by Counselor Toomey, and after Counselor Toomey, I'll go to, uh, Counselor Nolan. Counselor Toomey, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, to my colleagues. Um, there's certainly been a lot of discussion about, uh, having a charter re- review process, which I, I do support. I would not vote in favor of changing the charter, but I think people have raised a lot of questions and, uh, ideas on how maybe we could change the charter. My, I don't have any problem with some of these changes that hit this evening. I would prefer that we, you know, place a non-binding referendum in the November election, uh, to, to create a charter commission and then have a, a really robust community process, uh, set up to really delve into the city charter and where we can make changes or not make changes. My concern with this is home rule petition on, you know, i- i- each week are we going to have a home rule petition to change one part of the charter? That's my concern. So I'm just raising caution to the wind that, you know, if we're going to do this, I think it should be done very comprehensively, in one package, and then go forward from there. But I think, you know, each council, every Monday night, could be bringing in a home rule petition to change one part of, of, of the city charter, and I don't think that would, uh, go over very well with the state legislature. So I'm just raising that there. I think, uh, e- e- each one of us can have, uh, different, um, change of the charter that we would like to see done, and I, I just don't think that doing it piecemeal is the way to go on this. This, you know, it's a major, major, uh, undertaking and a change in how the city is governed, and I just think we should do it, look at it comprehensively and do it, uh, the right way. That's so, that's my, uh, opinion on that, uh, as we move forward. But, you know, I wouldn't vote to change the charter, but people want to have that discussion, and I think we should have that discussion, uh, citywide with the really, uh, wide range of opinions on this, on the subject. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I will go to Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui, through you. I really appreciate, uh, Counselor Toomey's discussion of, and recognition that it really is, uh, time and a, a very appropriate step to take to have a conversation about the charter. That is, in fact, one of the changes we're proposing for the charter, to make sure that happens. It would start next year, it would be a very robust public process with a charter commission. But as we discuss the, the policy order before us, I want to start off by thanking you, Mayor Siddiqui, for working hard on this. It's been a, a year process, and also over the last week, there's been so much discussion about moving this forward. And to quickly highlight what I said last week before discussing the amendments that were sent to the council earlier today. The policy order before us lays out the numerous meetings that were held over the last year and includes memos that were sent to the council by the Collins Center. These memos, based on other charter reviews done recently in Massachusetts, were produced after interviewing each member of this body, and the three proposed charter amendments before us are ordinary and standard in many municipalities in Massachusetts, and yet these changes, if enacted, would be meaningful. If we pass this order tonight, the public process will continue, will unfold, and will broaden. There is nothing more public and open and transparent than having the decision on whether to change the charter on a ballot and left up to the voters. I do want to talk about all of the council got, um, policy order amendments sent earlier today. They do not change the intent or substance of the three charter amendments. Rather, they aim to address the way that the charter amendments end up on the ballot before voters, and it clarifies the appointments process if this were to pass. For the appointments clarification, questions were raised in the, on the orig, on the original wording of the proposed amendments to the charter, on whether 30 days was long enough, given the summer recess, and also whether, what happens if something, if an appointment is not approved or rejected in that time? So what the new language does is clarify, say, well, it could be up to 60 days, but if nothing happens in those 60 days, the appointment or reappointment would automatically be considered approved if no action was taken. That is what a lot of other charters have, and to clarify the proposed change then makes that clear and specific. So the original order would have sent these amendments to the legislature, but after learning about another potential path last week, which is actually the path that Boston is taking, and we, uh, everyone has a memo from the Collins Center, uh, on the desk, affirming that this would be a legal path for us to use, it seemed clear that sending these amendments to the Attorney General directly is the better path. It is more straightforward, it is less bureaucratic, and frankly, it's less burdensome for our state delegation, which has so much on their plate that it would be challenging to see if they would get to this in time for a November vote. And it guarantees a timely process. The Attorney General, if we use this process, would have four weeks to either approve or deny the amendments, and if approved, they would be on the ballot this November. The Collins Center agrees this process is both legal and practical, and I, along with the motion makers, believe that the amendments before us are the best option for us to put this before the voters in November. A big reason is timing. Again, Section 18 makes it clear the AG would need to give a thumbs up or thumbs down within four weeks, whereas we know from other home rules, there's no telling how long it would take the legislature to pass a home rule because they have so much on their plate and so many different things going on in their processes. The certainty of timing means that the Election Commission would have appropriate time to put these questions on the November ballot. That's a real concern. This would make it done before August, which would be an appropriate level of time for them to prepare a third ballot if it passed and the AG confirmed that it was a legal, uh, question. And we would know that we could start the voter education process in a month. So ultimately, regardless of which direction we're to go in, these charter amendments will rest in the hand of the voters, and the amendments before us do not change that fact, and it would be very exciting, I think, for us to start this process. And again, one of the changes would mandate a very large public review through a charter review commission, starting next year and then every 10 years. So we are not saying that won't happen. There's tons of other questions to be raised, as Counselor Toomey, uh, mentioned. Those are more appropriately handled at next year, if this passes, that we would engage then in a much longer and thorough process and comprehensive review of the charter. So I, I hope we are going to pass it. I know that the amendments are before us, and, and Mayor Siddiqui, you might want to add to anything, my comments. And I want to thank Counselor Sabrina Wheeler and Counselor Carlo, who are also sponsors of this.
Thank you, Counselor Nolan. Uh, I, before I go to my other colleagues, I wanted to, I did receive an email at 5:19 PM today, and I'll forward it to you. I received it from David E. Sullivan, Cambridge resident and former State Elections Division Chief Legal Counsel, who stated, "Dear Mayor Siddiqui, the Collins Center has advised you that the city council may propose a city charter change requiring council confirmation of city manager appointments to city boards and commissions through the charter amendment procedure. That procedure requires a two-thirds vote of the city council and the state Attorney General's legal approval and passage by the voters at a city election. It does not require state legislative action. I agree with the Collins Center's advoy, advice. Section 4 of the state constitution's home rule petition, home rule amendment, and Chapter 43B, Section 10A, and 18 of the Massachusetts general laws clearly authorize this procedure so long as the charter change does not affect the composition mode of election or appointment or terms of office of major city officials, as this one obviously does not. My qualifications to give this advice include that as the former State Elections Division Chief Legal Counsel. I wrote the State Secretary's Official Local Charter Procedures Legal Guide. I was also at the state senate's chief, I was also the state senate's Chief Legal Counsel for over 10 years. I reviewed recent Attorney General's opinions on this subject. Please let me know if you have any questions." He further, um, wrote that the Chapter 43B requires that the main mayor's concurrence, uh, only if the city has a mayor, defined as an officer elected by the voters, uh, as the chief executive officer of a city or an officer lawfully acting as such. Since Cambridge does not have a mayor, only the approval of two-thirds of the city council, uh, is required. So I wanted to share that, um, with the council. I will go to, uh, any counselors who have their hands up. I think I saw Counselor Simmons' hand up, I'm not sure. And we do have our solicitor here, so I'll give our solicitor the floor.
Madam, Madam Mayor, my hand is not up.
Okay. Any, any discussion from colleagues? I don't see any, uh, so I guess the, what we have before us are amendments, and so, you know, we can, with the, what we should do is vote on the amendments, but before that, I know that our solicitor is in the chamber, and if you'd like to say anything, you can.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I have not seen that email that you just read, and I did not receive a copy of the memorandum from the Collins Center until late this afternoon also, uh, so we're at a bit of a disadvantage with respect to our ability to analyze it. However, I, I will just say, because I'd like to be clear and on the record, um, as the, the city's lawyer, that, that we do have some concerns about whether this process can be used in this way. First of all, the fact that Boston used it is not relevant. I agree with that part of what David Sullivan said, that, uh, that, that the first part of that, Section 10A of Chapter 43B refers to amendments that may be proposed only with the concurrence of a mayor in every city that has a mayor. Um, so that's, that's one distinction. The, the language is a little bit ambiguous, uh, so I am a little surprised that, um, David Sullivan feels that it's as clear as he seems to feel it is. It's not clear to me that, uh, this Section 10A process is available outside of cities that have a mayor, but even if it were to be, um, I also agree with the language that he read, but I disagree with what it means. It says that only a charter commission elected under this chapter may propose any change in a charter relating in any way to the composition, mode of election or appointment, or terms of office of the legislative body, the mayor or city manager. So it really, uh, depends in part on what terms of office means. It could mean term, in terms of time, but it also could mean terms and conditions. And I have not had an opportunity to do any legal research on this. The Collins Center memorandum is not based on law, it is not a legal opinion, it's not a legal analysis, they are not lawyers. Um, and I don't, again, I don't know how much time David Sullivan had to analyze this and see whether there's any legal guidance available, um, to the city council, but I did want to share my concerns about this. I assume that if the amendments are passed and it goes to the Attorney General and DHCD, that we will hear from the state if they feel that there are any problems with this approach. I wanted to, uh, save the council, uh, that possible roadblock if, in fact, there does turn out to be such an issue, but of course, that's completely up to the council and, um, which of these two ways to pursue, but I did want to just share the, uh, concerns I had about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Solicitor Glowa. Uh, one question I had, and this is really for the, the body, is, I think if we do the One question I had, and this is really for the body, is I think if we do the amendments and they pass, and I guess, pending on what the AG's office said, wonder if there's a way to, you know, say, in the event that the AG's office route is not tenable, we can also reach out to the state legislature with that home rule?
Certainly, I think that by the, I would recommend that the council take two votes in the alternative, so that if the Attorney General does raise any concerns or not agree with the possible, the possible approach of doing it that way, then you would have the special legislation petition already drawn up the way you already have it, so that you could perhaps, in your order, another order could say that you want to submit this to the Attorney General and DHCD as Chapter 43b, Section 10a provides, but in the event that that route is not successful for any reason, that you vote in the alternative to submit the home rule petition to the legislature.
Madam Mayor, just if I may.
Clerk Wilson.
On that point, I think just procedure, it may be simpler and easier to accomplish the task that you just discussed, is to adopt the policy order as, in its unamended form, and then to take the amendments as a late, as a late policy order, as its own separate policy order, and then send those to the Attorney General's office.
I think the only risk there is that they're open to charter right, and so that's the risk we learn, and I don't think we want to do that. So I think that's why we have to either probably figure out how we, going to Counsel Nolan, amend the language to, further amend the language to provide the alternative options. So, you know, I'll give some time to Counsel Nolan to do that while I go to Counselors on event.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm a little bit unsure what the, what the time constraints are, so maybe the solicitor can help us with that, because I would expect that we would hear back from Attorney General's office relatively quickly, whether or not they agree with this approach, and does that, you know, leave us enough time to do the home rule petition if for whatever reason the Attorney General's office says no, we can't do it.
So you're asking about the time constraints?
Okay.
So I think the AG's office has like four weeks, so I think it's more, if they say no, and it's four weeks from now, it's, you know, August 1st, then getting something to the legislature, who then would have to act on it, you know, I think doesn't give enough time, you know, if they do approve it, you know, it has to still get, Election Commission is involved, I, you know, they have to print ballots, there's all this, it just, the timing runs out in that respect, in my view.
Mayor Siddiqui?
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, through you, if I could explain to the council, as Solicitor Glowa said, there is a timing issue for both of these, and as you indicated, I think the clerk has demonstrated a way that we could do this in one order with amendments. There's also that literally logistical challenge. First of all, the legislature can take a long time with home rules. We would have to make sure that they understand it's a very high priority of the council. Also, the Election Commission would need to prepare a third ballot, so, and they need some time to do that, so if this way goes into September, it's going to be very challenging, if not logistically difficult, given that we also, they will be preparing ballots for our election in November, and they need more than, my understanding is they would like more than two months to prepare it, especially because early voting is very likely to happen, absentee voting is likely to happen, so it's both the legislature timing as well as our own internal processes for the Election Commission.
Counsel Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm still a little bit unclear on the process. Could we send it to the Attorney General's office and to the legislature at the same time? And if, if we go, if we, if we hear back from the Attorney General's office that everything's fine, then we could notify the legislature, never mind?
It's two different, Counsel Zondervan, from what Counsel Nolan has said, there's, it's two different mechanisms, so you can't, we can't send what is before us, before the amendments, to the AG's office. We have to, I think we have to do two things. Clerk Wilson?
So you could send whatever language you want to either, to either entity, and then, you could send whichever language you want to either entity, I believe, and again, I want to speak for Counsel Nolan, I believe that she's crafting some language that will send one version of the language to the legislature and one version of the language to the Attorney General's office.
Counsel Zondervan?
Thank you. I think that answers my question, so we would send it to both offices, or are we sending it to the legislature only after we hear back from the Attorney General?
So it's, Counsel Zondervan, we're going to have probably a language in the event that the AG's office route, I guess, is untenable. I don't have the amendment before, before me just yet, Counsel Nolan's working diligently, but we can, certainly after she has it, we can have that before us.
I mean, I'd just suggest.
Clerk Wilson.
For simplicity, it might make sense to send in both, in both directions simultaneously. That way you'll get the benefit of the timing, but it's whatever the council would want to do.
We can, Counsel Nolan, we can do that. So Counsel Zondervan, Counsel Nolan is working on those options.
Great. Yeah, that would be my preference as well, to send it to both bodies at the same time.
Okay, while she does that, anyone have any questions? Do the fellow motion makers, Counsel Carlon, Counsel Sabrina Wheeler, have anything to No. So we will just wait momentarily as we come up. Go ahead, Counsel Nolan.
I believe I just, I'm sending something to clerk, but the clerk has some amended language, which, if it makes sense exactly what I did, I'm happy to propose. What I also did was have two separate documents he recommended. One would be the original, which would be the home rule, and the second would be with the amendments, and one would be sent to the legislature and one would be sent to the AG's office. I think we start with the AG's office, as you said, and then have the other as a backup, I think, if.
I think Counsel Zondervan's suggesting.
We do both.
We do both.
Okay.
So Clerk Wilson, you're getting Counsel Nolan's amendments to your email so that we can have the council preview them.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counsel Zondervan.
We're also, thank you, we're also, through you, we're also amending the language itself, right, which is independent of the mechanism? So the, changing it from 30 days to 60 days?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we can vote on those amendments in regard, right?
I believe so, yes. Just hold on, Counsel Zondervan. Clerk Wilson is looking at what has come from Counsel Nolan.
So what I, I'm going to show, share this on the screen. So what I currently have from Counsel Nolan is to essentially add another ordered paragraph that sends one version of the language to the legislature and one version of the language to the, to the Attorney General. And there would be two documents. One document would be, I have to remember which one is which. One version would be the, one version would be the, this is the language as amended, or it would be a new, it would be a new, it'd be a new attachment, which includes the 60-day language, and are you, I guess it's, do you also want to amend the original language to change that to 60 days instead of 30?
Yes.
Okay. You're sending that now, okay. So it's a, it's a lot to share on the screen, but let me get to it.
Madam Mayor?
Counsel Zondervan?
Do we know which legislator we're sending it to?
No, not yet.
So through you, Mayor Siddiqui, traditionally it's sent to Representative Decker. The attachment would be amended as follows. The first section, and again, I know it's hard to see on the screen, I'll forward it to the counselors.
Can you speak into the mic directly?
Oh, excuse me. I know it's hard to see on the screen, but the amended attachment, actually, I'll forward So correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Nolan, but there are essentially two petitions, so to speak, in this one attachment. The first petition goes to the, goes to the, to the Attorney General's office. The second petition will go to the legislature, and it has an amendment moving from 30 days to 60 days.
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, well, I think would be great is if we adopted the amended version first, and that goes, so that is very clear, it goes first to the AG, and that, secondly, we have the backup for the home rule. If there's a way through you, Mayor Siddiqui, that the clerk can ensure that that's how we're moving forward, that would be.
Yeah, and so the, so there are, there are basically two categories of amendments. One is an amendment to the ordered paragraph, which I'll show on your screen, which I'll, make sure I show to your screens. That's to add a second ordered paragraph, which ensures that one version goes to the Attorney General's office, which is the first ordered paragraph, and the second ordered paragraph sends a, sends the, a second copy to the, to the legislature. Then the next category of amendments amend what are the actual language in the petition.
I think that makes sense. Maybe not. Solicitor?
Madam Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of notes, that I read the substantive amendment language to include changing it from 30 to 60 days, and also adding an additional sentence that says, "Action on any proposed charter changes shall be authorized by," oh, sorry, not that language. Sorry? What am I looking at? Excuse me. The sentence would be added that would say, "An appointment or reappointment shall take effect if the City Council fails to act within those 60 days." So I just wanted to remind the clerk that that language would also be added. And another point of clarification, that the language that is to be forwarded to the Attorney General is also be forwarded to the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
So we'll make that an additional amendment.
Yeah, just to clarify, through you, Madam Mayor, to the solicitor, does that need to be language in the ordered paragraph, are you, are you saying, or saying that automatically happens if the motion passes?
Through you, Madam Mayor, to the clerk, I believe that you, that may have put some language in the proposed order that says that it would go to the Attorney General. So where it says it would be sent to the Attorney General, it should also add that it is also to be sent to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, because that's what Chapter 43b, Section 10c requires.
We'll make that addition right now.
Solicitor, so it's on the screen, is that, you see the blue portion? Oh.
It says, Solicitor, and the State Department of Housing and Community Development.
And Counsel Nolan, this is your motion?
Yes, it's Counsel Nolan.
Looks good to me, thank you.
Okay. So I think we're ready to go.
So.
Yes.
So on the amendments. Counsel Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel McGovern?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Tumi?
No.
No. Counsel Zondervan?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one against. On the policy order as amended, Counsel Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel McGovern?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Tumi?
No.
No. Counsel Zondervan?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, eight in favor, one against.
Mayor Siddiqui?
Counsel Nolan?
Yes, I'm clarifying, we pass the order, and then there are two separate documents will go to two separate offices.
Yes.
And I want to move for purposes of reconsideration.
So also some of the rules?
So first vote, again, is on suspension of the rules to go to reconsideration. The next vote is on reconsideration. A yes vote on the reconsideration vote will keep reconsideration open till Wednesday. A no vote on reconsideration will make the vote final tonight. On suspension of the rules to go to reconsideration, Counsel Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel McGovern?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Tumi?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Zondervan?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Motion passes, nine in favor, zero against. On reconsideration, again, a yes vote will keep the matter open till Wednesday, and no vote will finalize the matter tonight. On reconsideration, Counsel Carlon?
No.
No. Vice Mayor Malin?
No.
No. Counsel McGovern?
No.
No. Counsel Nolan?
No.
No. Counsel Simmons?
No.
No. Counsel Tumi?
No.
No. Counsel Zondervan?
No.
No. Mayor Siddiqui?
No.
Motion fails, nine against.
We are now moving on to the charter and number, item number four, that the city manager has hereby requested to work with the appropriate departments and building contractors to reconsider the current plan, which eliminates many trees, including large old growth trees that are not part of the new building footprint. So this was exercised by Counsel Simmons. I'll go to Counsel Simmons, and then I'll go to Counsel Nolan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I moved my charter right on this, on this particular policy order because of my concerns, and there are few. Any change at this juncture is going to delay this project for at least one year, and with an increased cost of about $6 to $10 million, conservatively speaking, this means that the Tobin School community will not move into a new building until at least September 2026, which also means an additional year of students, teachers, and other staffs being relocated. Early childhood education preschool classrooms will also be delayed until at least spring of 2026. The project team has, and on numerous occasions, identified the trees to be retained on the site as long, as those along the perimeter, Alpine, Vassal, Concord Lane, Concord Avenue exclusively and specifically. At three community meetings this was discussed, July 2020 and September 2020, and again in December 2020, this community process has resulted in a preferred design for the Tobin Montessori and Vassal Upper School projects. The three trees in question are where the city is proposing to place the 1.25 million gallon stormwater tank, which provides sufficient flood relief for the immediate neighborhood around the school, and this is as a basiliency member that, excuse me, measure that is enormously important in the area of that, of that area of the city. It is the intention of the project to maximize replanting around the site. The plan is expected to significantly increase the number of trees required by the new tree protection ornaments, and the design of such is underway and will be ongoing for some time yet. Community engagement is planned for the tree in landscape design. I just want to also just say, and then I would like to go to the city manager or indoor his staff to speak further on this, I just want to know that his staff to speak further on this, I just want to note that the other part of my just concern about delaying this project is that it has significant impacts. Let me just bring to you the attention, something that the council might not be aware of, because a number of the members were not here serving at the time, and that's the main library. The main library took several years, and we all believe that the main library is a beautiful building, and it is clearly. We finally, through enormous process and pushback, sited it at its original location, where it was initially selected to be, and that was a multimillion dollar cost, increased cost because of delay. In 2002, the second design, the main library, had an estimated cost, construction cost of $51 to $55 million when the bids were received in 20, in 2006. The cost came in at $76 million, and that was because we delayed it. The city performed value engineering measures to reduce the cost, but still needed to appropriate, to appropriate additional $13 million for the project. And so much my concern is, where there have been these meetings, where the community has agreed, and as far as I know and been told, this is the plan that the community has voted for. My concern is if we try to change now, we will incur a lot of additional costs, and I don't think that's a wise thing to do. So this is why I exercised my charter right. I respectfully ask my colleagues to allow this to fail and let the project go forward as the community has and is aware of it going forward. So having said that, I would like to hear if there's anything that Mr. Dufusquali or someone from his staff would like to add to what the impact of this order might have beyond what I've already entered into the record.
So Counselor Simmons, I don't see any of the city manager's staff in the chamber right now, but I know that Counselor Simmons, Counselor Nolan, and Counselor Carlon have their hands up. So I'll go, I'll go to them, and maybe perhaps, and then Counselor Zandervan, and then perhaps city manager may show up. And I, for, for the purposes of just facilitating the next few conversations, I'm going to ask the Vice Mayor to take over, and I'll be back shortly. So we'll go to Counselor Nolan. Thank you.
Thank you. I did talk to the city manager about this. My colleague should know about this order, and he understood that the order is asking him to do everything he can to work with and save the trees. There is nothing in it about any kind of delay. I really appreciate Counselor Simmons raising that question and understanding her concern that we do not want a delay. We definitely want this to move forward. Every person who has written to us understands that this is something that should move forward. In fact, it would be great if it took less time than we're now expecting. To quickly recap what I said last week, and reiterate some of what we've heard in public comment, we've gotten a number of emails, yes, the community did talk about and know about this plan, but nowhere in those plans was the specifics about these trees being removed. In fact, a year ago on the plan, it had some trees in exactly the spot that we're talking about. Many in the neighborhood assumed it would be these glorious, very large, incredibly difficult-to-replace trees. So, and the Committee on Planting itself came in and weighed in, they had only heard about the specific plans about which trees would finally be removed just a few weeks ago. So Counselor Simmons is right that this has been a plan that has been reviewed with the community, but the specifics about which trees would be saved, and which could be saved, and which would be scheduled to be cut down was not clear. The full plan for that was not in place, because it was not something that had been determined. So there are 129 trees on the site, 94 are slated to be removed, and what this PO concerns is asking, again, just the city manager not to delay the project, but to work really closely to see if those trees can be saved, because they are outside of the footprint of the building. I also want to add something else that I mentioned to the city manager, when I did talk to him about this and asked if he had concerns about it. He indicated that he wasn't sure this could be done, and he also understood that this was something he would work to try to do. He would revisit and go back to the team working on this to see if there was something that could be done. The other element that I reminded the city manager of, we are in the process of seeking to acquire a slice of the armory land that is moving forward. It's not guaranteed, but it is looking like we may be able to do that, and the question is, it is not too late in the plan for, if that alleviates the need for us to take down these trees, which is for convenience of certain elements that could be readily changed, then it seems to me it's really well worth doing. So these three oaks alone make up for 25% of the canopy proposed for renewal. It will take decades before the replacement trees can provide the benefits of the old trees, and there's no guarantee the new trees will survive. So again, this does not have to delay the project. What we're doing is raising the salience of this critically important public resource and provide, will provide shade for not just the neighbors, but the workers on the site, that if there's any way to save those and have the project still move forward in a timely manner, we're really asking that to happen. It seems incumbent on us to do that, and I don't, I don't want this to be seen as something that would delay the project. I think the analogy to the library construction, that was an entire process that had to do with the siding of the building. That's not what we're talking about here. That's separate from it. It really is about one specific part of this site that can be hopefully looked at, take a really hard look and see if we can save it. So I do hope my colleagues support it. Again, I didn't, I know the city manager is certainly not promising anything, but when I talked to him, he said he would at least try again, because he knows, and I believe his, his team knows, that we would like to do this if we could. We are not sure if we can. So thank you very much. I yield, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Nolan. I'm going to go to Counselor Carlon as the co-motion maker to see if he has anything to add.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Through you to the full council. I looked at the illustrative site plan. It's not a survey accurately locating the tree trunks, but it sure appears that two out of three of the trees could be saved. They're not in the roadway, they're not in the curb line. Now, I don't know the extension of the root structure underneath, but one of the trees is definitely in the way of the road layout, and I understand why the loop wants to be retained for, I assume, its buses coming in and out, but it sure looks like it could be saved. Fellow landscape architects have told me, and maybe these trees don't qualify, that you can theoretically move successfully at a 90% rate a large tree in these days. It's expensive, but it can be done. So those two things alone, in my mind, mean we have to get greater information. I noticed the DTW Commissioner and his boss have returned, so we might get more information on this, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Carlon, and I will go to the city manager and Commissioner O'Reardon for anything they'd like to add to this conversation. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I'm going to turn it over to Owen and David, who've been in the details. I will say that when this came up, we did ask Owen, as we had from day one, to look at any possible way to see whatever trees we can save, and Owen has taken a look at it. He's talked to our consultant, and this is the recommendation we have, but Owen can get into the more specifics, but, you know, since this project has started, we've done everything we could to protect as many trees as possible. That's been the city policy. You know, Owen has been a leader in making sure that happens, but I'm going to have him tell you what some of the concerns are now.
Commissioner O'Reardon?
Through you, Madam Vice Mayor. Quite frankly, we are still in the middle of looking at this, and, you know, it is ironic that we anticipate ordaining a new tree ordinance this evening and have this issue emerge, and indeed, one of the trees that, at this time, is scheduled for removal is a 30-inch tree, an exceptional tree. And so it comes as a significant pain to me personally, and I think to everybody else that this is the predicament that we find ourselves in. Counselor Carlon is right that indeed, there are, we think, two trees that are vulnerable as a result of the design of the driveway and the access into the underground area of the school. However, there is a 1.25 million gallon stormwater tank that is being constructed in this location. This is the only location where that can be constructed. And this is an enormous tank. I think some of you may have seen an image of the tank that we've just recently completed in PL 6, immediately adjacent to the large, tall building in the port. This tank will be about three times bigger than that, and so it is impossible to save these trees on that basis. Now, going back to what Counselor Carlon spoke about, whether or not we can actually save these trees and replace them, that is a huge, I mean, just if you look at the size of these trees, the size of the canopy, I'm not underestimating the impact here at all. We're going to be looking at that over the next few weeks. I don't think it's possible to save those trees, but there are actually two additional oak trees that are somewhat adjacent to them that we may, we will look at as well. And we look at some other species, good quality trees in the areas to see whether they're savable. The one thing I would say to you in terms of saving these, that the only place you can relocate them is on Tobin Field. You cannot take them out of that space. They're just too big to be transported out of that area. So that's just a reality as well. You cannot get them through the neighborhood. And again, recognize as well that you have extraordinarily poor soil conditions in that neighborhood, in, on that field, and that comes with significant environmental considerations, given the fact that it's formerly a dump. And so there's nothing straightforward about trying to save these trees, though from my perspective, we need to make every effort we can to look at all opportunities in that regard, but as, as things stand, from my perspective, it's not possible to do so, and that's with considerable regret. But again, we continue to look at this, and I would hope that we would have a more detailed response back to you by the meeting in August. Again, we have a schedule that, you know, is pretty aggressive at this point in time. We have, you know, we're closing down the site on Thursday, and, you know, the contractor and the architects are looking at a lot of work that's going to happen this fall, and so this will be an impediment to that schedule, the more we delay it, and so we're under considerable pressure to see as to whether there's alternatives. The one thing I would say to you in terms of the landscaping of that, of the field itself, is that that's, that has not been completed at this point in time. That work continues to be considered in terms of just the architectural design. I expect that we will be going back to the Public Planting Committee with more details of that as time moves along, and, I mean, our commitment is that we will replace, we will plant as many trees as possible in that area, recognizing that the open space has also to be preserved in terms of, you know, activities that are presently planned for that area. But it's with considerable regret, from my perspective, and I think from everybody's perspective, that these trees will have to be sacrificed at this point in time, and we're looking at opportunities to retrieve the situation, if possible. And at the moment, I'm not terribly optimistic, quite frankly.
Another area that, I mean, Mr. O'Reardon's been involved in deeply, and he may want to make a comment, is we've worked hard on the Article 97 issues to be where we're at, and we are concerned that if we end up moving those three trees, it could cause some Article 97. There's no guarantee, but there is a possibility, and we have spent a lot of time making sure that we were all set with that, so that is another potential major issue that's right now not resolved, if we were to move those trees. And I don't know if Owen wants to go any further, but it's something that we have to consider strongly, because it's been a big process to get to where we're at to say we're all set to move forward. So, like I said, we take, taking down these trees very seriously. Owen will do everything he can, but at this point in time, where we are with the process and what we're looking at, it's going to be difficult to figure out a way of saving them.
Commissioner O'Reardon, did you have anything to add on the Article 97 issue?
Not at this time, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to my colleagues now, Counselor Zandervan, and then Counselor McGovern. Counselor Zandervan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Manager, to you, to the city manager, and the commissioner. It is a bit frustrating to be in this position again, where we're being told that we have to destroy large canopy trees in order to move forward with the construction project. I do appreciate the effort to look at it again, but I'm not hearing a lot of optimism or a lot of options here to get what we want. I don't see any reason not to pass this order tonight, because as always the case, the manager will look at it and respond, so passing the order is not in itself introducing any delays. In terms of moving the trees on the site, I don't understand the Article 97 issue, but I'm sure those will be explained to us in due time. But in terms of the soil conditions, I would hope that we're going to improve those in any case, in order for whatever replacement trees we're planting to thrive, so I don't see that as a particular impediment. And I guess my question to the commissioner is whether the stormwater tank precludes putting the trees on top of where the tank is located. My colleague had brought up example of the main library, and as I understand it, some of those trees were moved and are located on top of the underground garage. So is that at all a possibility here?
Through you, Madam Vice Mayor. So Counselor, in order to be able to place this huge tank, I need to make that space available, which necessitates the removal of the trees in the first instance. Bear in mind as well that these trees presently are on what was formerly a landfill, which means excavating those, exposing that soil, and then we have to relocate that, that tree with that root system, with that material in it, and so there are environmental and safety issues associated with that. I would also remind you that the beech tree that was relocated at the library ultimately died. There were two beech trees at the library. One of them unfortunately didn't make it when it was relocated, and so our replanting large trees this size is a considerable effort, and I don't know whether that can be done successfully. I have no expertise in this area, but we are looking at people who have expertise at the moment to see as to whether or not there may be some possibility of doing this in a way that's both environmentally sound and from a public health perspective sound. And I don't want to exaggerate whether or not there's a public health issue here or not. I just don't know.
Counselor Zandervan?
Thank you, Ben, Vice Mayor.
I believe the mayor is back, but we'll go to Counselor McGovern, and then Counselor Simmons.
Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, through you. So, actually, you just sort of answered a question I was, from Counselor Zandervan, that I was going to ask in terms of, I just wanted to make sure, you know, we had talked about how these trees at the beginning, that these trees were not actually on the lot or on the construction site for the school, and, but you answered that the reason that they're being removed is because of this, this tank that's going underground. So it is still, they're being removed not because people want to remove them, but because it's necessary for the project. Is that fair to say?
Through you, Madam Mayor, and that is fair to say, Counselor.
Okay. Thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor. I mean, the only thing I would say about, Counselor Zandervan mentioned that, you know, we could pass this, you know, tonight anyway. I mean, the only thing I would say is that it sounds like you, the city, has already looked at this pretty closely, has already studied it, has already considered trying to save the trees, and have come up with a conclusion that they can't, and I would just, why give them more work to do for something that they've already done? So I'm satisfied with the city's answer. Not that I'm thrilled about it, you know, it would have been great if this wasn't the case, but it certainly doesn't sound like the city did this, made this decision easily or without thinking carefully about it, and it sounds like it's unfortunately necessary. So I will not be voting in favor of this tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just another point, and I'm sorry I missed some of the meeting, but there is also a concern, when you do a school, it's traditionally a four-year wait, and I know parents have to move their kids, children out of there. This will probably now make it a five-year wait. So we already know how difficult it is for parents when you do schools, and students have to be moved, but this will probably delay to a five-year project rather than a four-year. to be moved, but this will probably delay to a five-year project rather than a four-year project. Just another consideration.
We're going to go to Counselor Simmons?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, let me just say and acknowledge, I certainly understand the work that Councilor Nolan has done. In her years on the school committee, she was a strong advocate on issues of... on the environment and tree protection, second only to our former colleague, Mayor Henrietta Davis, who really has laid the groundwork, all this incredible environmental work, tree protection work. This is all started by former counselor and former mayor Henrietta Davis. And so I applaud the extraordinary work that you do, Councilor Nolan, on the environment and around tree protection. I think you stand heads and shoulders above many others who take this issue on. So this is not... when I bring up these concerns, it's because, as you've heard, our city experts have said, we have looked at this, and I don't think any city does as much and goes as far around trying to do anything and all things that will protect our environment. So the only reason why I bring up my concern is that if we've already looked at it, we've already been told that with much disdain, disdain, angst, and reflection and consideration, we cannot move this project forward. And I do know that this has sort of came up maybe through a community individual. We want to certainly ask and re-ask. At this point, I think we have, through the work of the city council staff, exhausted our options, but tried to come up with as good a response that leaves us a measured effect. So those trees, as Mr. O'Reilly says, it pains him, but these trees come down, we will replace them, and no one wants to see that happen. But it has to do other things for our city. So this is in no ways against the order that you put forward. It's just my concern and why I will not be able to support it, is because my concern is that we know, and we have these exemplary people that have said, if we could save the trees, we would. But by saving the trees, it may cost us so much more, and that is why I raised this as an issue to my colleagues. Madam Chair, I yield.
We'll go to Counselor Carlon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. The reason the tank has to be there is because elsewhere is directly over the old garbage pit and cannot hold that weight. And this is not in that zone. This is adjacent to it. Okay, that's too bad. I was searching. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
We're going to go to Counselor Nolan.
Thank you. One more question. If we were to acquire that slice of the armory, could the tanks be there? I know it's in process. I know it's not guaranteed. I know we think we'll get it, but we don't know. But is that... what's the status of that? That site, would it be something we could...
While we've made progress on the purchase of the armory, that would... even if it technically could go now, let Owen say that, it still has the same impact, which is the project would be significantly delayed because we would be held hostage on an outcome that we don't control. And so I think that would, again, probably be a very precarious position to put the city in, to be thinking that it could use a site that it doesn't own or may never own. So I would say that... and, you know, so I think that the answer is, is I don't think that's a viable solution.
Counselor Nolan.
Yeah, no, I know it truly pains you. I'm just asking, I mean, and I don't understand why it would be an entire year. I don't want to delay the project, but the idea of if we got that site and we can move the tank and save the trees, it just seems like that would be a good thing, and we may know by the summer or by... at least if it's a... not if it's a guaranteed, but if it's moving along. So that's why I asked. I didn't know if that site geology, which is what Counselor Carlon was asking about, was appropriate if we know.
Through you, Madam Mayor. Counselor, the other point I would make is that the construction of the tank is on a critical path. So if there's uncertainty about where the tank can be, then everything stops unless it's time as we've achieved a certainty as to where its alternative location is. And that means you lose this fall and winter as a result of that. And so that certainly pushes you out six months. And in terms of a school year, obviously, that has a significant impact in that regard. So simply put, from that perspective, changing the location of the tank at this point in time causes redesign, which is not insignificant, and given the uncertainty about the alternative location, as you've identified, would cause even more delays, given the fact that we wouldn't proceed with, you know, the constr... we couldn't proceed with anything unless it's time as there was certainty there.
True, true, Madam Mayor. To follow up what Owen said, after talking to our consultants, a year could be conservative from their point of view. It could be longer. So I just... this is what they've told us, not my area of expertise, but we said at least a year, but they... the certainty would be at least one year to take a look at this. And then, you know, obviously, there... I mean, we are a financially stable city, but we see what's happening with costs, and we're projecting six to 10 million, but if it's delayed much longer, we see what the numbers turn out, it's probably 10 to 20 more million now. Just another number to put out there in terms of potential delays.
Counselor Nolan?
Yeah, thank you. I understand. And I think the reason you're hearing this frustration is, again, as I said in the beginning, while these plans were on the table, the very specifics of the tree removal, as the Committee on Planting told us, was not at least available to many people until just a few weeks ago. That's why it's come up now. It might have been in your head, but when we went back and looked at the plans from a year ago, it was not clear. So I'm just... the more we can do to ensure that that doesn't happen, if any, future projects, you know, it's really important to just say we're all trying to honor what it is that people want. But again, we didn't just throw this out there, having known a year and a half ago this was going to happen. We came to this because a few weeks ago, it became evident what was going to happen. So I just want to make it clear that this is not something I didn't pay attention to. This is something I paid attention to, and when it came to us just a few weeks ago, it was, oh, my gosh, can't we do something? As you said, this is... if this is on private property, it would cost, you know, $100,000 for that person if they were to take it down. So I understand we want to save it, and I'm just trying to do everything I can to see if there's any way we can. Thank you. I just want to make that point, that, again, part of it is the timing of the very clear information that wasn't on the table a year ago when we all knew about these plans. Thank you.
I don't see any other hands up on this matter, so it's before us.
At the point of...
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Simmons.
Again, I don't know how the vote is going to end up. I mean, given what we know now, would Councilor Nolan consider... what's the word? Rescinding? We've asked, we're getting a pretty strong, we wish we could, and of course, the city council knows, and the city staff knows. They would do... they'd move heaven and earth, maybe not a good analogy, to do what they could to save this. So I would just offer my colleague, she has done her due diligence and represented her community well, but she...
You know him?
...considered just rescinding the order, knowing that the city council and its staff will do all it can. But at this point, it looks like that they cannot.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you. What I could do is change the order to report on the feasibility of reconsidering the current plan, and then we'd get a full report on why it is and all the steps that were taken. And that may make all of us understand how it is that this happened. It should be relatively quick, because everything has already been done, which doesn't... isn't a specific then. I'd have to see if Counselor Zondervan approves that instead of reconsider, to report on the feasibility of the plan, of any plan to reconsider. Does that make sense, Counselor Simmons?
I... that's... sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Asking them to do the work that they've already... it's asking us to do the same thing. Whether it's report back is, can you do it? It's exact same effort, and they're already saying they can. I respectfully ask, what we say is a quick thing. In five or 10 minutes, we're going to be asking them to do a boatload of other things. And so I just would be respectfully, it's, again, it's just saying, asked and answered. And to ask the staff to go and, you know, let me ask this a different way, to say I'm going to get a different answer, I suspect you're not. And so it may not be a very good use of the time and the demands that we already put on the staff, there's so many things. So I would, you know, if the council does not want to do it, I was just... was trying to say, I don't think you're going to... whether you change a part of speech on the orders, whether you change the outcome, and it's going to ask you to do a body of work that's time-consuming. And in this game, time is money. Madam Chair, I will just... I will call the vote.
So Counselor Simmons, Counselor... in the last order, that the city manager, being hereby is requested to work with the appropriate departments and building contractors...
To report on the feasibility of the plan.
To report on the...
The feasibility of reconsidering the current plan.
Feasibility of reconsidering.
Reconsidering the current plan, and then everything else is the same.
Okay. Clerk Wilson, do you have that?
At the point of order.
Go ahead, Counselor Zondervan. Say your point.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe Counselor Simmons called the question.
I heard Counselor Nolan say, I have a... I'm going to make an amendment. What about making an amendment?
Right. That's what I thought I did before Counselor Simmons had the floor.
Yeah, so that's what I... that's what I heard, and Counselor Simmons responded, saying she doesn't agree with that, but Counselor Nolan can go ahead if she wants to. So Clerk Wilson, if you can read the Counselor Nolan's amendment.
So the amendment is to delete the word reconsider in the last ordered paragraph, in the only ordered paragraph, and replace it with the words, "report on the feasibility of reconsidering," and then it goes on, "the current plan," and so forth.
So that's the amendment before us? We can do a roll call?
On that motion, that it's to amend the policy order. Counselor Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Vice Mayor Malin?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern?
No.
No. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons?
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Yes.
Counselor Toomey?
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan?
No.
No. Mayor Sadiq?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Five in favor, four against.
So now we have the motion as amended before us, and I don't see any other hands up, so I suggest we just do a up and down vote.
On adopting calendar item number four as amended, Counselor Carlon?
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern?
No.
No. Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons?
No.
No. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
No.
Yes. Counselor Toomey?
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan?
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Sadiq?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Six in favor, three against.
We now move on to items on the table. We've disposed of number seven, so we have number six, which is the Tree Protection Ordinance, pleasure of the city council.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did propose some amendments two weeks ago, and had the opportunity to work with you, Madam Mayor, and with the Lister's office, and we have adjusted the language, which we met earlier this afternoon. We'll propose that the Affordable Housing developers be eligible to apply for funding for tree replacement efforts through the tree replacement fund. So I'm putting that amendment before you, and I hope that the council can support it. And again, we did work on this language with the mayor and the city.
And just so my colleagues know, I did share the language with Mike Johnston and Peter Daley and Carl. So they're... I think they've reviewed it, and I think they are fine with this amendment before us as a body. And I think there wasn't confusion, because two weeks ago, Counselor Zondervan did propose an amendment, but then withdrew the amendment. And so those amendments don't actually last the meeting, and so... and as Counselor Zondervan said, he'd make a... you know, he'd... we'd work on other... some other language. So that's before us. I see Counselor McGovern's hand up.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Camera on here. Thank you to you and Counselor Zondervan and everyone who worked on this and refined it. I definitely like this a lot more. Feel better about this than the original amendment. Just a couple, just quick questions for clarity, because, again, we heard some things in public comment, and I just want to make sure everybody understands what we're doing here. So this would... if an affordable housing developer was going forward with a project and wanted to request additional funding to either replace trees or save trees, or they would be... they would be allowed to do that. It doesn't require them to do that. So I know there's a lot of talk and public comment about, you know, what's going on at Jefferson Park, and I think that led to a lot of this discussion. But this will not... my understanding from reading this is that this is optional for them to do, and it doesn't... it's not another requirement or another cost or another... something that might lead to a reduction of units or any of that. This is just if they would like to request this money, they now have the ability to do that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was also talk about... and again, well, I guess it really doesn't matter, because if it's voluntary, then an AHO project could request it or not request it. So it... I guess in that sense, it doesn't matter. I do want to say, just for the record, because we did hear a little bit of this public comment about Jefferson Park and the trees, I just want to point out that they're... I asked Mike Johnston about this. They're looking at cutting down between 151 and 157 trees. They are adding 194 trees. Now, obviously, I understand that the canopy, I mean, you know, they're not replacing the trees with the same-sized trees that are there now, so it is a loss to the canopy, and that is not good. But a lot of that is due to the fact that they need to take those trees down to replace the utilities and stuff underneath, and that they're adding an additional 100 units of housing. So there were some... it made it... so there was some public comment that made it sound like they were cutting trees down and not replacing them. I just want for the public to know that they are planting 194 trees. And again, I understand the canopy issue, but I didn't want people to think that they were cutting down all these trees and not replacing them at all. Maybe not perfect, but certainly better than people thinking that they're just cutting these trees down and doing nothing else. So I just wanted to make sure people were clear on that. I really do appreciate the work on this, and I will support this amendment. Thank you.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Thanks to my colleague for his support and for that explanation. I did, as Mr. Johnson said, toured the site with him and looked at the trees that are being taken down, and as has been said in public comment, a lot of the trees are in bad shape and would have to be replaced anyway, but not all of them. But as is often the case, you know, it may be that the project is designed and the landscaping is designed, and it turns out that there might be, you know, opportunities to plant a few more trees, but the project doesn't have the funds to do it. So what this provision would accomplish is that in that situation, they could apply to the tree replacement fund for those additional funds to increase the canopy in that example. So again, my thanks to you, Madam Mayor, for working on this with me, and I hope that we can pass this and ordain the amendment.
Any other hands up on this matter? And I want to just make a big... bring out just a quick point, so related and under the umbrella of just, you know, the work that some of our nonprofits, including CHA, have done around... including CHA, have done around, um, you know, energy and reducing greenhouse emissions. I think it's really, it's great that we're talking about, we have to talk about trees. And, you know, they've reduced their greenhouse gas emissions by over, you know, 31%, uh, you know, since 2010. So I think, you know, we, we've, we always, we're talking about the environment and it's, trees are under it, and there's a lot of other, um, things that, you know, the CHA is doing to mitigate against climate change. So I just did want to mention that, because I don't think we talk about, um, that too much. And folks bring up the CHA, um, and there's been some public comments about what CHA is or is not doing. And I just wanted to clear the record that, based on what I've seen, they have actually spent significant monies to try to mitigate as much as possible. So, um, I'm, I'm glad that the, the counselors, our colleagues, um, you know, agree with the amendment. And thank you to the solicitor and Megan, uh, attorney, where, who, who worked with us on this. So I don't see any other hands up, so what we can do is do a roll call on the amendment. Clerk Wilson?
On amending the ordinance, proposed ordinance to insert a new sentence, oh, excuse me, on amending the proposed ordinance to insert a new sentence in, at the end of section 8.66.040 that reads, "Developers of 100% affordable housing projects not otherwise subject to the provisions of this ordinance shall be eligible to apply for funding from the Tree Replacement Fund to increase canopy protection and canopy expansion within the scope and limitations of such projects." On that amendment, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler. Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Present.
Present. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Eight in favor, one present.
And now, if there's nothing else, we can go to adopting the ordinance as amended?
On ordaining the ordinance as amended, Counselor Carlon.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did want to, um, just briefly speak to the ordinance that we're about to adopt, um, because it is kind of a big deal. Um, we've been working on this for over two years, um, starting with the work of former, uh, life mayor, Jen Devero, many community activists, uh, folks in Green Cambridge, and of course, um, DPW, and the Urban Forest, uh, Master Plan and the Task Force. So it's been a, a long road to get here, and, you know, I think, um, we are going to really be able to do a much better job protecting our, our tree canopy, which is really, really critical. There's been some, some recent articles in the Globe, uh, about the, the dangers of, of heat exposure in, uh, the Boston area. We're seeing it in Houston, in Oregon, uh, as well, with these heat waves that are getting worse and worse because of climate change. So it's really critical that, um, we protect our, our tree canopy and that we make sure that we provide, uh, the, the benefits and, and life-saving, uh, benefits of the tree canopy to everyone in our city, uh, including our, our low-income community members. So, uh, again, I want to thank my colleagues for adopting that amendment, and, uh, I hope that we can pass this, uh, ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, who's sitting right in front of us, so really appreciate it. So on ordination, we can do as amended. We'll do a roll call.
On ord, on ordination, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Present.
Present. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
No.
No. Counselor Zondervan. Counselor, yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven in favor, one present, and one against.
We now move on to applications and petitions. There's one. Pleasure of the city council? Counselor Nolan, can you speak into the mic?
Move adoption.
On that, we'll do a roll call.
On adopting the applications and petitions, Counselor Carlon. Counselor Carlon. Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to communications. There are five. Pleasure of the city council? On a motion by, on a motion by Counselor Toomey to place on file, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon. Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to policy orders. Pleasure of the city council? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Resolutions? Pleasure of the city council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Remove, uh, resolution two for amendments.
Remove question two on, to make an amendment, and we can do a roll call on number one?
On resolution number one, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to resolution number two, that city council thank Father Walter Cariaro for his service as pastor of St. Anthony and St. Francis Parish's. Counselor Toomey, you have the four.
Thank you, uh, Madam Mayor. I believe the clerk has sent everybody the, uh, two amendments. There's a, a, added a whereas, that Father Walter will be taken to Health League, where he will have the opportunity to focus on rest, healing, prayer, and reflection. Now, we have a new resolve that the city council will on record. Thank Father Walter Cariaro for his 14 years of service as the pastor of St. Anthony Parish, and 10 years as administrator of St. Francis Parish, and wishing him all the best in his future endeavors. Be further resolved. So those two amendments before us, just in person, I'll just want to, uh, thank Father Walter for his many years dedicated service to the communities of Cambridge and beyond. So we wish him all the best as he, uh, goes on a new chapter in his career. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Toomey. We have the amendments. Clerk Wilson?
On the amendments to, uh, resolution number two, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We are going to go to the resolution as amended?
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons. Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We are now on to policy orders. Pleasure of the city council. We're going to pull ten. Counselor Simmons? Sorry. Counselor Simmons, say that again?
Number four and eleven?
Number four and eleven.
Madam Mayor?
Madam Mayor.
Counselor, uh, McGovern, and then Counselor, uh, Zondervan.
One, please.
Number one. Counselor Zondervan?
Number six.
Number six?
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor Mellon?
Number five, please.
Number five?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Number eight.
Number eight?
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Carlon?
I'm sorry. Seven?
Seven? All right. We have pulled one, four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, and eleven. And we can do, hearing no other counselors, we can do a roll call on two, three, nine, and 12.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to policy order number one, that the zoning ordinance of the city of Cambridge be amended to insert a new row into section 4.31, residential uses regarding the service of post-operative care for a dog. Filed by Counselor McGovern and Vice Mayor Mellon. Counselor McGovern, you have the four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. Just real, real quick, this is, um, uh, this is, I think, a quick fix to an issue that I think we all, we all had heard about, uh, that, um, there was a, a resident who spoke tonight, who, um, was taking in, uh, someone else's dog to help with post-operative care, um, and was told that she needed a variance to do that, went to the BZA. The BZA said, "Well, actually, this doesn't fit in any definition, so we can't approve you to do this." Seems like a pretty straightforward thing. Certainly, if someone wants to help, uh, a friend or someone in the community take care of an animal that needs, uh, medical care, uh, they should be allowed to do that. So, um, hopefully, we can pass this tonight and, and go on and get this done in short order. And I want to thank the Vice Mayor, uh, for her support. I want to thank, um, actually, I want to, I want to thank, I did, uh, I did pull in the advice of, um, some help from Patrick Barrett, uh, as an attorney, on where, some of the, how this fits into the table of uses, and want to thank him. Um, and hopefully, we can get this done real quickly, um, and open this up for other people to do this, um, appropriately and legally, uh, because I'm sure it happens a lot more than we know. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
I have Counselor Carlon next.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, there was very little information related to this. At least, my book didn't have more, other than the chart and the districts. Is this for one dog, or is this unlimited number of dogs?
Counselor McGovern?
Thank you, um, thank you. Um, I did actually have a whole bunch of backup information, and was sort of advised to, um, not include it and have that, just because this is going to the ordinance committee. But this would allow one, uh, animal, uh, dog or cat, or, you know.
Yes.
Hamster, I guess, um, as of right. And then, if it were more than one dog, it would be a special permit request.
Great. Thank you. I, I thought that was the case, but I wanted to be clear. Appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I see Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, and I'll go to Vice Mayor Mellon as a motion maker, and then Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you. I'm happy to be a co-sponsor on this, and thank you to the Counselor McGovern for taking it on. I think, um, we all watched, uh, a few weeks ago, or maybe it was just last week, when this sort of unfurled at the BZA and thought this would be just a, a real quick fix for, um, not only Ms. Coveney, but, uh, anyone else who wanted to do this. And just to answer Counselor Carlon's question, uh, at the very bottom of the policy order, it does say, "A single animal hospice". So this is not intended to be a kennel or multi-animal. It's, it's clearly spelled out at the very bottom of the policy order, uh, section K, single animal hospice. So I hope that clears up the questions, and, um, I hope that our, our colleagues can support us on this this evening, and then it will go off to, uh, the ordinance, uh, the planning board. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yelled back.
Counselor Sabrina Wheeler?
Madam Mayor, I'm very supportive of this. Thanks for the, um, the motion makers for bringing it forward. I do, uh, just want to confirm it in that last remark, you know, Vice Mayor, uh, I've done it, that this was a zoning petition, and, um, I just wanted to make sure, since we're heading into a, a recess, that there was, um, enough time for it to pass if we're moving forward, uh, with it tonight. Uh, some motion makers have looked at that.
Go ahead, Counselor McGovern.
Madam Mayor, through you. Um, we were going to actually bring this in last week, and, and we purposely brought it in this week to give us more time, so we, we should be good, um, time-wise.
Counselor? Sabrina Wheeler?
Thank you. Yeah, I yelled back.
Great. Seeing no other, uh, hands up, we'll do a roll call on the order.
On referring this matter to the planning board and the ordinance committee, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons. Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Counselor.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan. Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes. Nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to policy order number four. The, the city council endorsed the Agassi neighborhood name being changed to the Baldwin neighborhood in honor of Maria L. Baldwin. Counselor Simmons, we'll go to Counselor Simmons, and that, and this was filed by Counselor Simmons and myself. Counselor Simmons?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for being a co-sponsor of this name change of the Agassi neighborhood to the Mariah Baldwin neighborhood. Uh, first of all, I do think it's extraordinarily important that we acknowledge my accountor. My accountor is a young woman, raised in Cambridge, went to our high school, is now studying at Harvard. And she took this on as a role of advocacy in righting a wrong, which is to lift up and acknowledge, uh, a man. I often say gentleman, but I don't use ag, use the gentleman any making, um, who performs shameful acts. And I, if I can get my hand on the language that we're using, um, in memorials, markers, and public art, what means what shameful acts constitute. Louis Agassi clearly stands straight out. Uh, one of the shameful acts is directly engaged in profiting from and/or principally known with their role in the supporting of the transatlantic slave or slave act, or directly participating in the theft of land, or engage in work or efforts that promoted the violence of, promoted the violence of white supremacy in the hierarchy of human value based on race. And I believe one of the things that Louis Agassi did in his treatise was wrote, uh, at length around the hierarchy of human value, and that human value placed African-Americans at the very, very bottom. And so this young woman takes on herself this, this role of saying, "I want this, I don't want to live in a neighborhood named after someone who has, has, has participated in what we would call egregious acts." And this is our city. And our city is one that stands tall on being, or trying to be progressive, and promoting and doing the right things, even particularly when we see the wrong thing has been done, that we try to move forward to make those changes. I would say, you know, Cambridge does a great deal to make those changes. I often say, "We're on the road, but we're not there yet." When I think back, just what happened recently at the school committee, where the school committee member made that horrible statement, um, and certainly had the great sense to stand down. But that happened just recently. This is our cap. This is our chance. This is our opportunity to right a wrong, and, but also to lift up a Mariah Baldwin. In this second whereas, my accountor says, is, or it's written, that this process was initially brought to the city council attention in February 2020, at which time the council voted in favor of endorsing the neighborhood residents' discussion around the potential name change. And that goes further, in the last whereas, the members of the Agassi Neighborhood Council reported that, while there were some dissenting opinions, the clearly, the clear majority of the neighborhood residents did wish to their, have their neighborhoods name changed in honor of Mariah Baldwin. A speaker earlier this evening talked about how we named our buildings. And I just want to point out that Wellington Harrington Neighborhood, not buildings, but neighborhoods, are named after two men. The name Wellington School, which was on Columbia Street, and the Harrington School on Cambridge Street, that name was adopted by the Cambridge Redevelopment Authority in the early 19... in the early 1960s to describe an urban renewal area. The Wellington School, long gone, built in 1884 on Columbia Street, was named for Dr. William W. Wellington, 1814, 1896. And then the Harrington School was named after Charles G. Harrington, 1897, 15, 1953, uh, who would end up being the superintendent of schools. That building was taken down for the King Open School. I just raised that just to say that we have, uh, neighborhoods named after people, Wellington and Harrington. Why should we not? And I, I'm hoping and assuming that they have not committed any egregious acts, but why would we not? For all the good that this woman has done and for so long been hidden from our sight, would we not, one, lift her up? Lift up the, the attitude, opinions, uh, and sentiments of the neighborhood? And right, uh, right this wrong by taking Agassi's name off of anything that the city has that names him as a part of any neighborhood in our city. I am hoping that my colleagues will support this motion as one small step in the journey of equity and acknowledging the good work of people that have been so long liable to be one that's marginal, marginalized, um, in our own history. So, Madam Mayor, I yield before you to use, if you'd like to make some additional comments, after which I hope my members will speak, uh, from their heart. And I hope at the end of all the discussion, it will be a vote to support this order. I yield before.
Thank you, Counselor Simmons. And I've, Counselor McGovern, Counselor Nolan, and then Counselor, uh, Carlon. Um, and I'll, I'll just say really briefly that, you know, I want to thank, um, Maya and many others who are involved in this. And this is the, it's resolved at the same, City Council go on record endorsing, um, the name change. Um, with that said, I think you and I, we've both been in touch with solicitor on, um, the, you know, I think there's been a question of, um, is this policy order, i- if there's anything that comes next after the policy order? And I think, um, you know, that can be figured out. But I, I do think it is important to go on record based on what you've said and based on what is outlined and the process that we had voted on in February 2020, um, to have an additional, have this endorsement and have this policy order in support of what the council may want. So, I'll leave it at that. I'll, I'll go to Counselor, um, McGovern, Counselor Nolan, and then Counselor Carlon. Counselor McGovern, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I want to thank, uh, you, uh, Madam Mayor, um, Counselor Simmons and Maya. You know, it's funny, when Counselor Simmons was talking and, and, and some of the, um, you know, some of the, uh, argument for not doing this about, well, we can't name a neighborhood after a person. Well, isn't that what sort of the Agassi neighborhood is already named after? Is, is just the wrong person. Um, and, and so, uh, you know, I, I think this is, um, long overdue. Uh, I went to the Agassi school as an elementary school, and I supported the name change, uh, to the Baldwin school back then, and I support the name change in the neighborhood now. Um, you know, this is, uh, you know, we, you know, we, that argument, and Maya said it great. And I forget the exact way she said it, but it struck me, you know, when people say, well, he was a, you know, a man of his times. Well, um, you know, not everybody during that time felt that way, right? And, and there were people that stood up. And there were people that, uh, didn't believe those things. And so, it, you don't get off the hook, um, just by, you know, because, uh, you know, you, that was a, a more common held belief, uh, back then. He certainly could have held a different belief. Um, so he's not absolved, uh, of that. And so, I really want to thank all of you. I'm happy to support this tonight. Uh, and again, it's a long overdue change. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I, um, totally remember, I think it was one of the first school committee meetings I ever went to. Nathaniel Vogel started this process in 2002, I believe, to change the name of the school. It was exactly what needed to happen. And it was very exciting to see a student-driven research project actually lead to the name of the school change from the Agassi School to the Baldwin. I think this process is also a really, really important one to go forward on. We did get a number of emails, 10 or 15 emails today from neighborhood, um, folks who felt like they didn't have notification on it. I know that the, um, ANC, interestingly enough, the Agassi Neighborhood Council with the name in it, um, did a survey. But there's still a lot of people who feel that they weren't apprised of it. So, um, I think it's really important that we get that word out, um, to those people so that they understand the full extent of what the notification was, what the process was, so that they don't feel that this is just going on without their, um, notice. I personally think it should be changed, definitely. I, I think the, the right thing to do is to get the Agassi name off of, off of all of this. However, since that hasn't happened, I, I'll exercise my charter right so that we can move forward and ensure and understand how it is that people in the neighborhood can make sure they understand the process so they don't feel blindsided by this.
So, Counselor, I had recognized Counselor Carlon, so I'll let him speak. I'll let him speak, and then we can move forward. Counselor Carlon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I too support a name change. And I, the name of Baldwin, obviously, has been heavily researched, and I get a lot of the meaning of that. Uh, there are 5,000 people that live in Agassi, and I'm guessing that's a little over 2,000 residences. Uh, I would hope that we're sending out a postcard so they all do know about it. I, I agree with my fellow counselor here tonight that, uh, we could say we endorse it based on the information we've received. But, you know, my neighborhood has a horrible name, Neighborhood Nine. And I've wanted to change it. But if it changed in council and I didn't know about it, I would be pretty ticked. So I think just out of courtesy that, uh, the process should include a postcard notification, or some form of notification. Again, just out of courtesy. And people might be completely delighted. Or they might question it and want to be part of a bigger process. My question that also comes to mind is, is this what the Port process was? Of course, the Port was an old name of that area. So it, it isn't the same. So notification seems to me to be a missing step of all the residents of what they think is the Agassi neighborhood. That's what I'm recommending. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So, Counselor Nolan has exercised her charter right. So we will move on to the next policy order, which is, policy order number five, that the city manager is requested to confer with the Personnel Development and other relevant city departments to examine and implement a flexible, permanent, remote work policy for city employees who can perform their tasks remotely. This was filed by Vice Mayor Mellon, Counselor Nolan, and myself. Counselor, uh, Vice Mayor Mellon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Um, I think I was very surprised when I first started working for the city to realize that there was no remote work policy, no work-from-home policy at all. Um, that was true before COVID. And certainly COVID has, uh, forced us all to, you know, think about working from home and, and remote work. And shown that we can, uh, work remotely. I'm in my bedroom right now, um, performing my work function. Um, I'm often in my kitchen or in my dining room, um, in my, many of my workstations. So I was surprised to see that the city did not have a remote work-from-home policy, uh, in place now that COVID has ebbed a bit and people are returning to work, that there is no flexible work, um, from-home policy. The work-from-home policy that went out that is, um, available for employees now until September is incredibly narrow. Um, you either have to be either in isolation yourself, in quarantine yourself, have a medical condition, or you have childcare, um, issues that is directly related to COVID-19. Additionally, if you are requesting these, and these are fully remote options. There's no, um, partial remote options, work from home on Fridays, Monday and Wednesday afternoons, uh, work from home. This is a fully remote, uh, policy. I was surprised also to see that the city is requiring, um, that the city could request photos of the employees' designated work areas to verify suitability. Employees can only be working from their designated work locations. I think when we think about work-from-home and remote policies, particularly coming out of COVID, it's going to be really, really important for us to have, um, a flexible option for our employees. Uh, a lot of companies are moving very towards, the companies that had remote work and flexible work options before COVID are certainly moving to more flexibility. My concern is, if we do not have something flexible and quickly for our employees who are still recovering from COVID, um, and the pandemic, employees that provide, uh, childcare for their children who, um, you know, may never have had their kids in daycare. Uh, so it is not directly related to, to COVID, but they don't have a place for their child. I, I am, I am concerned that if there are other flex, more flexible options out there in the private sector, and we don't have a remote work-from-home policy, a flexible policy, we will lo- we'll lose our best and brightest. We will lose that opportunity to retain them. And then we will lose the opportunity to attract, uh, really great employees who, um, may want to have that option to work from home on Thursdays for a childcare or parental care issue. Um, I think we also really should look at a flexible work-from-home schedule if we're thinking about meeting our climate goals and being a leader and saying, you know what? 25% of the time, all of our employees that can work from home will work from home to really relieve that pressure off the traffic and congestion and greenhouse gas emissions. There's a lot of reasons that the city should be, uh, really looking for a flexible work solution, now, rather than, I, I understand that there has been a committee that is going to convene, to examine the feasibility of a, a remote schedule. But we're not likely to see those recommendations until at least January 2022. That's six months from now. So, uh, this order is really to ask the city manager and the Personnel Department to look for, um, and implement flexible, permanent, remote work policy for city employees who can perform their tasks remotely. Um, and then really thinking about a climate survey, uh, sending those out to those employees and finding out, you know, how many people do want a more flexible work option? Again, I, I don't want people to think that this is, I'm saying, uh, our employees want to work permanently, five days a week from home. I'm saying, I think we have all learned over the pandemic that, um, working from home is a great option, if you can do it. If you can do it and still serve the residents. Like I said, I am in my house right now. I'm in my bedroom. I'm serving the residents. I'm doing it well, I, I like to think. Um, but I think that our, our employees should also have that option, um, coming out of the COVID pandemic and really thinking about what a work-life balance looks like for them. I know, and you guys all know, uh, to my colleagues, that our employees answer emails all hours of the day on Saturdays and Sundays when we, when we send requests, when residents send requests. Uh, the reality is, our, our employees are working from home. They just don't have a flexible work schedule, um, that is codified, that is manned, you know, that is allowed by, um, the city administration. So this is really for us as a, as a body to say to the city administration, we should be looking at a more flexible work schedule for our employees. Um, and the sooner the better. Again, I'm, I'm concerned that we are not going to be able to retain, um, city employees that we, that we have been saying for 16 months that have been doing an incredible job for the residents of this city, um, from their kitchens, from their bedrooms, from their bath porches. Um, and I'm also really concerned that we do not have a flexible work schedule and we want to attract those great candidates. What, what would make them want to come to the City of Cambridge if they can go to, um, a private sector job or even another municipal job that has, uh, a more flexible work schedule for people who want it? So, this is really just asking the city manager to look at a more, um, a more flexible program and, and ask for a survey of our employees to see how widespread the desire is to have a more flexible work-from-home, uh, policy. So, I hope that, um, I, I really want to thank, uh, Counselor Nolan and Mayor Siddiqui for joining me on this, um, really important, um, policy order this evening. And I hope that our colleagues can support us on this this evening. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield back.
I see Counselors, I see, I'll go to Counselor Nolan, and then I see Counselor Zandervan.
Quickly, thank you, Mayor Siddiqui, for working on this and to the Vice Mayor for bringing it. I will just echo everything she said about, particularly the idea of being responsive to employee needs. The kind of work schedules that work for people do not ever have to impede workers' productivity that we know, you know, 30 years ago, when job sharing was all the rage, it was, oh my gosh, it will ruin things. In fact, it created really dedicated employees because it gave them an opportunity to, to have a work-life balance that many other jobs don't. So, so this order would allow us to take advantage of something we've already had a trial of, which is the last year of working remotely for many of our people. And this is really about ensuring, as the Vice Mayor said so, um, eloquently, that, of attracting the best people, but also retaining them. And also frankly, being a 21st century, people, but also retaining them, and also frankly being a 21st century, it's now 2021, a 21st century employer, making sure that we are able to provide to the workers who we hope to attract the kind of jobs that they hope to be in. So I'm really glad to support this, hope we move it forward, and to just reiterate the point that the Vice Mayor made, it's really important we get this in place soon because otherwise, in the fall, there's going to be no opportunity to do this when some of these existing temporary, very rigid definitions of how it is that you can work remotely from home go away. So thank you very much, I yield.
Councilor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I couldn't agree more with the Vice Mayor and Councilor Nolan's comments. And, you know, working as a software engineer, I've been, I've had the privilege for decades of being able to work from home when needed and avoiding traffic jams and actually increasing my productivity by being able to spend less time getting to work and spending more time doing work. I do recognize that, of course, not every job position is available to that, and I think in most situations where people simply cannot work from home, we should consider additional accommodations so that, you know, it's not a fairness to them for doing the kind of work that can't be done from home. But a lot of the work that our staff are doing now, thanks to technology and so on, can be done from home, and it's definitely time that we adjust our practices accordingly. So I totally support this order and thank you so much for bringing this forward.
Any other comments from the council before we adopt? Hearing none, we can do a roll call.
On adoption, Councilor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey. Councilor Toomey. Absent, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one absent.
We're on to policy order number six, that the city manager has requested to work with the DPW and the family to install suitable memorial at a meaningful location, including a new tree planting to honor the life of Luca Gibson. Councilor Zondervan? This is filed by Councilor Zondervan and myself. Councilor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for co-sponsoring. Some of my colleagues may remember this young person, they spoke very, very passionately in front of the council a few years ago in favor of tree protection, as well as a specific tree on the Harvard campus that we were trying to save at that time. And it's just really tragic that we lost this very passionate advocate at such a young age. And it would be really fitting to memorialize them with a tree planting. I have been in contact with the family, and they've identified several potential locations that would be meaningful to them. So we'll work with the DPW and the Parks Department to make sure that we find a suitable location to plant a memorial tree. And I also wanted to mention that the family will be holding a memorial tribute and an art exhibition. There were also artists that actually won an award for a photograph that's referenced in the policy order, and that will be at the First Parish on Third Street on August 21st.
Thank you, Councilor Zondervan, for bringing this forward. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I just wanted to, first of all, express my condolences to the family. I know quite a number of their friends are really, really hurting right now. It's so awful always to lose such a young person, and I'm grateful to be reporting this order in, in an effort to memorialize this young person, especially for those that they left behind. I did want to add that I had been in touch with some of their friends and tried to find a suitable location for a memorial tree at a school site. I understand that they went to the Kennedy Longfellow, and so I started there with Mr. Maloney and Member Rojas. Apparently, there's going to be a new procedure when someone wants to plant a memorial tree at the school department. So that conversation has already been started with Mr. Maloney and Member Rojas, so I can send you along all of the correspondence that's happened up to now so that you have it, if that's helpful, as you move forward in finding a suitable location to memorialize this young person. So thank you, Madam Mayor, I yield back.
Seeing no other hands up, we can do a roll call on adoption.
On adoption, Councilor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to policy order number seven, that the city manager has requested to instruct the city solicitor to prepare an ordinance which allows individual condominium owners the ability to obtain a city construction permit to repair known structural and other safety violations even without a majority of the building's condominium owner's vote of approval. Filed by Councilor Carlon, myself, Councilor Nolan, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler. Councilor Carlon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been contacted by six or seven people who've had condominium problems, where there's structural problems or roofing problems, and they can't get the full board to vote on spending the money. And most of them are affordable condominium, if there's such a thing, but I'm more on the affordable end, and people just don't want to spend money. Reason I wrote this, I use 86 Kirkland as an example, which is current, the problem is current, and there is some serious structural problems on the first floor. The building should not be occupied in the condition it is in, and the woman who owns the first floor wants to renovate it, fix it up, rent it out as a business site, it's right near Savinors, and she can't do that. And after each of these buildings, I've gone to the city, and they're in a position where they can't force somebody to fix a serious structural problem or water leak problem. If they, and each, many of these, a violation has been sent, and the only recourse, Heather Hoffman questioned this, as did some of the co-sponsors, the only recourse is for the city to sue the condominium association and go to court. And if there's a way to make a stronger effort to get this resolved before a year in court, we would all appreciate that, including the residents. And I've talked to the city about this. This is one solution. There is no state law that precludes this, nor federal law. You would think there is, but there isn't. So this is just to allow the city to give a building permit to the person that wants to solve the problem without getting a whole board to approve it, for whatever reason they don't want to approve it. But this is a verifiable structural problem where a statement has been sent and nothing has changed. So I hope you will all approve it. All it asks is that the manager work with the city solicitor and other departments, inspectional services, to develop an ordinance that gives the city the right to do this. So thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for the co-sponsors, including yourself, Councilor Nolan, and Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Councilor McGovern?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to make a quick statement on this policy order, and it actually goes for the other condo, my policy order number 10 as well. My family may be going through a condo conversion in our family home, and so I asked the Ethics Commission about this, and they advised that I not take part in any conversations or votes regarding condominium changes or anything, so I am going to vote present on this and not take part in the conversation as well as on number 10, and I just wanted to explain that so people understood my vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McGovern. I don't see any other hands up, so we can go ahead and do a roll call on adoption.
On adoption of policy order number seven, Councilor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Present.
Present. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes eight in favor, one present.
We're going to go to policy order number eight, that the city manager has requested to work the finance and personnel departments to examine stipend models for the city's multi-member bodies. This was filed by Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, Vice Mayor Mallon, myself, Councilor Zondervan. Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thanks to the Vice Mayor and yourself for work on this issue, including a policy order that you had filed in April that talked about a few different aspects of representation on multi-member bodies, including stipends, and thanks as well to Councilor Zondervan for co-sponsoring this. These bodies have a really important role and decision-making power on issues of peace and elections that we have to do in the city. It's great that folks have been willing to volunteer at the time, but not everyone can afford that amount of time after they serve on their bodies and be unpaid. We're serious about ensuring they represent the diversity of Cambridge, we have to make sure that we're able to reach those folks for whom unpaid labor is a consideration or a responsibility. There's at least three other cities in Massachusetts alone that provide stipends for folks who serve on their multi-member bodies, Medford, Somerville, Laominster, along with the charter amendment that we talked about earlier tonight, this is another effort to ensure that our bodies really represent, you know, not only the diversity, but the talent that we have to bring, which might mean we can reach all the folks that we're reaching. So this policy order asks the city manager and our departments to look at the cities that have stipend models already, and to look at our multi-member bodies and see which require the most time and the most effort, and look at those.
Sorry, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, you're cutting in and out, but I think I got the gist. So I don't see any other hands up on this, so I think we can move to adopt.
On adoption, Councilor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to policy order number 10, that the city manager has requested confer with the Law Department, Cambridge Development Department, and the city manager's housing liaison to discuss and advise condominium conversion ordinance. I'll be brief and then pass it to any of my co-sponsors. As the policy order lays out, Massachusetts law allows towns and cities to adopt by two-thirds of their local legislative bodies, local ordinances or bylaws regulating condominium conversion that are stronger than or which otherwise differ from the statewide law. And many of us, for many years, have talked about this, and really the concept of tenant displacement. There was a tenants displacement task force that, back then, Councilor McGovern, then mayor, you know, appointed me as chair of, where we came up with a set of preliminary recommendations for citywide condominium ordinance, and so this policy order, and then the draft ordinance language really carries out the intended, those recommendations, and flushes out further a potential ordinance that the council can consider. And we've asked the Law Department, CDD, and the city manager's housing liaison to review these recommendations, many of whom who've been aware and have seen this language because this has been worked on for quite a number of months to get to this point. And so I'm hopeful in our future Housing Committee meeting, in our future Ordnance Committee meeting, we can further discuss and then adopt, you know, a future ordinance on this topic, acknowledge the co-sponsors on this, Vice Mayor Mallon, Councilor Simmons, and Counselor, especially Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, who were his team and his input and work on this over the past few months, and also my chief of staff, Mallon McCormack, who really does a great job of putting everything together behind the scenes. So I will pass this on to my co-sponsors to say a few words. I will go to Vice Mayor Mallon, and then I can go to, I'll go to Councilor Sabrina Wheeler, and then Vice Mayor Mallon.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui, and thanks for being the lead sponsor on this and for sharing the tenant displacement task force, that you really highlighted this as a need in Cambridge, and that's something we could be acting on. The city's own data has shown thousands of residents have been pushed out of Cambridge because of how expensive it is to live here over the past few years and decades, and some of the other tenant protections that we would like to do or would like to be considering are prohibited by state law. But condo conversion isn't one of them, it's something that we can enact on our own as a city council. This ordinance would apply to buildings with four or more units, so it couldn't apply to smaller buildings, and that's under state law, but there are really important protections under this, including eviction protections, relocation assistance, requirements that tenants' rights be delivered to them in their primary language. I'm really glad to have helped work on this and excited to be talking about it more for the council. And I would just add that, you know, there's a lot we can learn from cities that have had, I don't know, in place for years, including Boston and Somerville, which have recently strengthened their, I think there's provisions in this language to be able to turn that around. So I'm really looking forward to moving forward with that.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. I just wanted to say thank you to you for your work on this. I know you had done a tremendous amount of work on this the last term, and I'm glad to see it coming forward tonight. It's long overdue, as I think you said, and Councilor Sabrina Wheeler said, so I'm glad that we are moving this forward. I think there were some great comments tonight in public comments, suggestions we got through email, so I do look forward to having a larger, broader conversation at the Housing Committee, and then moving this forward to the Ordnance Committee for possible ordination. So it's got a little, a little journey ahead of it, and I look forward to having that conversation, but I'm glad to have this finally getting started tonight. So thank you to you and to Councilor Sabrina Wheeler for spearheading this and moving this forward. So I'll yield back at this time, but thanks again.
Councilor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui, and all the ones who worked on this, happy to support it. I did want to understand, is the ordinance that was attached to it, since it wasn't totally clear to me, maybe I didn't read the policy order closely enough, but is that a draft that we would then be reviewing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it says that it's, it's referred, that it's going to be referred to the Housing Committee, and then it's, we're also saying to ask the Law Department and others to review it.
Right, yeah, it just wasn't, I assumed that, but it wasn't, it didn't seem explicitly clear that this was the actual ordinance that would be for us, before us, that we would then do. So it's very extensive, it's quite, I think, thorough in addressing, I think, many of those items that were laid out, so I'm happy to support, and I look forward to the conversation in the Housing Committee if this passes.
Yeah, I mean, Clerk Wilson, what we could do is say ordered this policy order and the attached ordinance, if that's not, if we can make it more clear.
So based on the ordered paragraph, it will send the policy order and the attachments to both, to the committee, to the Housing Committee, and it will send them to the city manager.
So I just want to make sure it's clear, to Councilor Nolan's point, I think it's clear, but if there's any clarifying language, I'm amenable to make it.
As long as it's clear, as long as this is being referred, it just said the policy order not, and actually someone asked me, what, is this an ordinance? So I was just being explicitly clear myself, thank you.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a whole ordinance that was drafted to be discussed. Councilor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Just wanted to briefly state my support as well, and my thanks to yourself and motion makers for all the work done on this. I look forward to discussing it in detail in committee and hopefully passing it, ordaining it soon, so we can continue to protect our tenants and protect them even better. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments on this, so I would move to adopt.
On adopting the policy order, Councilor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McGovern.
Present.
Present. Councilor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Toomey.
No.
No, Councilor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes seven in favor, one present and one against.
We are on to policy order number 11, that the chairs of the Ordnance Committee convene a hearing on amending the cannabis business permitting ordinance to extend the preference period. This was filed by Councilor Zondervan, myself, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler, and Councilor Carlon. This was pulled by Counselor Simmons. I'll go to Counselor Zondervan as the lead motion maker first, and then go to Counselor Simmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you, my colleagues. As we heard in public comment, a lot of businesses that were eligible and did this preference period have been delayed. They were able to make progress, which is good, but none were able to open during that two-year preference window, and primarily that's, of course, due to COVID. And, you know, this is one small example, you know, one applicant had their hearing continued, and, you know, they're going to be delayed by several months just because of that. And without this extension, we're not really able to fulfill our equity objective. And without this extension, we're not really able to fulfill our equity objective that led to this ordinance in the first place. So hopefully my colleagues will support this. All we're asking for here is a, is a hearing in the Ordinance Committee to discuss in more detail. The mayor and myself have been working with the Law Department on the specific language and we would bring that forward in the Ordinance Committee meeting for your consideration.
Counselor Simmons?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm happy to see that we're going to take a moment to look at the moratorium of the Ordinance Committee. As you know, I chaired the committee last month, I took the kinds of support that should be in place if we want EE applicants to have a real chance of succeeding. And we found the biggest need for these applicants is not only time, but also funding. And we came into this process, we didn't stand that most EE applicants do not have kind of wealth. They do not have really accessible, most people just have to start a funding and money is undoubtedly what they need to pay their rent for building, for opening their business paying train staff, the highest securities consultant, and the list goes on. So then the biggest boost the city could provide EE to engage and look at, help find, identify sources of financial assistance to help them get off the ground. I did hear the testimony and I do appreciate the fact that the moratorium put, slowed everyone down. So as we go forward with this idea of looking at the moratorium with a report extending it, I would also suggest that we include in that, that look back two things. One is that it's some community process to talk to people that are stakeholders, they have skin in the game. Another of them, a number of them came before the council and said, you know, please talk to us, engage us. And so I'm going to hopefully ask that we do that in addition to not only discuss about how we can extend the more moratorium to allow EE to gain a foothold, but also to find out if there's to the city that, what ways we can, not necessarily provide financial assistance, but identify financial opportunity when they get, those that are not well financed by, by large corporations to be able to stay, when they can, stay in the game. So I would like to introduce the following, is that we explore what additional financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain. I know that there's a prohibition on us doing it, so finding ways, as CDD finds ways for our business to do, to access other resources to obtain during the extended period. In addition, that there be a community process to hear the voices of those stakeholders and in the same other language states, such as such a hearing to take place nowhere than August 15, 2021, and I don't have an amendment. So if we do this five more times through the moratorium without looking at, at least not looking at what ways or some identifying financial resources and by not going to the people that are actually stakeholders in this process, I think limits our ability to make a clear and concise decision. And so I'm, I, I think it's very important that we find out a way to generally lift up as many of our economic empowerment applicants as possible. And I look forward to having a more fleshed out question through the ordinance. So my proposal amendment is that we explore, I read it to you, explore what financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during the extended period as well as adding a community process that engages the voices of the stakeholders.
Thank you, Counselor Simmons. Any other hands up on, on this before we move to adopt? And just to remind the public, I know there's a lot of various public comments, just to reiterate, this is to have the hearing and have a discussion.
But Madam Mayor, I'm offering an amendment to the order that is to explore what additional financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain
Yeah, does Clerk Wilson have that? Okay, so if you can just repeat it for Clerk Wilson because Clerk Wilson doesn't have that in email.
Okay, so, and, after preference period. In the order, this is that the chair of the Ordinance Committee chairs, and being a hearing to discuss the possibility of amending the ordinance to extend preference period, right after the word period. Just to clarify, when you're ready.
I'm sorry, you're going a little in and out for me, Counselor Simmons?
I said, tell me when you're ready.
So if I understand correctly, you're looking at the ordered paragraph and you're looking at the word period and then there's a comma and you want to insert some language there? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And what, just what is the language?
And to explore.
Okay.
Additional financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during that extended period, comma, and.
I'm sorry, so, and to explore additional financial assistance that the city may.
Mm-hmm, be able.
Be able.
To help.
To help.
Economic empowerment applicants obtain.
Economic applicants obtain.
During that extended period, comma.
During that extended period of time.
Period, extended period, extended period of time, comma, and.
And.
Find an opportunity, that hearing.
And find, and finding opportunity?
Finding an opportunity. Hear from stakeholders.
To hear from stakeholders, is that it? That's, and then, and then the rest of the paragraph goes on?
Rest of its meaning's okay.
So I'm just going to read it back one more time just to make sure that I have it.
Thank you.
So, to insert after the word period in the ordered paragraph, and to explore adding financial assistance that the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during the extended period of time, and finding an opportunity to hear from stakeholders.
Right, and so there's something missing. So it's going to have to be back. And to explore what additional financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during that extended period.
I'm sorry, and to explore what additional.
Financial assistance.
Assistance, yep.
The city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during that extended period.
Counselor Simmons, I'm seeing the clerk here struggling a little bit. Can you please, I think you're, if you read, if you have it in written form, email him?
I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Move along, I'll come back.
It's hot in here, so we're, we're melting.
Can I hear that? Go to the next speaker, let me.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. While we await the language, I think I caught enough of the gist of it to comment on it. And I certainly appreciate the intent of the language that my colleague proposing, but I don't see how it really fits in this order because the Ordinance Committee is not the proper body to consider financial assistance. And of course, the Ordinance Committee itself would have public comments about, you know, not going to stakeholders, but if my colleague intends for a more elaborate process than that, again, that wouldn't be the purview of the Ordinance Committee. So I would suggest perhaps bringing in a late order or some other vehicle to accomplish this task because I don't think it quite sits with this particular policy order.
Counselor Simmons?
I'm sure that's on its way to the clerk. I didn't quite get what my colleague said, but just to follow up on what I'm putting in there, all I'm asking, as I believe the maker of the motion is, is that we have an Ordinance Committee that looks at extending the moratorium. I'm supporting that. I'm always, I'm asking in addition is that do not close off the discussion about financial resources and if we identify those, we would pass that information along to the EE's. That's all. And we want to hear, we certainly want to hear from the people that this moratorium is, was ordained or to put forward to support. We want to make sure that we are doing all that we can to make sure work that we put forth by adopting this ordinance is doing exactly what it needs to do.
So Clerk has the language, Counselor Simmons?
That was, that was me.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since my colleague didn't hear my earlier comments, I'm happy to repeat them. What I said was that I certainly appreciated the 14th of the amendment. I don't think they quite fit in this policy order because the Ordinance Committee certainly doesn't have purview over providing financial assistance to the economic empowerment applicants. And the Ordinance Committee, of course, would have public comment and that would be an opportunity to stakeholders, but if my colleague imagined a more elaborate process than that, again, that wouldn't be in the purview of the Ordinance Committee. So my suggestion would be to do an order to the city manager to explore these issues rather than the ordinance.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Simmons?
I think reasonable people can disagree. If we're going to have this discussion and we do not allow that to be on the table, then it also doesn't allow people that are impacted by the work that we're doing to speak to it. And what would not be a more perfect opportunity to hear? All I'm asking is that we let that conversation be a part of it.
So I think.
I do not see a departure.
Thank you, Counselor Simmons. I think what we can do is just proceed, you have an amendment before us and we need to vote this up and down.
On the amendment to policy order number 11, and I'll just read it again just so everybody's clear.
Can you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry. On the amendment to policy order number 11 by Counselor Simmons, and I'll just read it again for the record, it's to insert in the ordered paragraph after the word period the following words, and to explore what additional financial assistance the city may be able to help economic empowerment applicants obtain during that extended period, and to provide an opportunity to hear from stakeholders on this. On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
No.
No, Mayor Siddiqui. Yes, the motion passes eight in favor, one against.
On the order as amended?
On the order as amended, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to committee reports, pleasure of the city council. There are no roundtable minutes.
Mayor Siddiqui?
Yes, Counselor Nolan?
Yeah, I just want to make a comment for number one.
Number one. And we can do a roll call on adopting committee report and accepting it and placing it on file, number two.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yeah.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Counselor Nolan has pulled committee report number one. The Neighborhood and Long-Term Planning Facilities Arts and Celebrations Committee and the Housing Committee conducted a joint hearing on Wednesday, February 17, 2021, to discuss the elimination of single and two-family-only zoning and restrictions on the type of housing that can be built citywide. Counselor Nolan?
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. I'll be brief, I just wanted to make a comment. This was a hearing based on, that was held after following a council order to hold a joint hearing to actually start that conversation about, as noted, elimination of single and two-family-only zoning. We also discussed other things that might come along with that, including reduction of parking area. This is the start of a conversation, there was presentation by CDD, lots of public comment. And at the end, to reiterate, I think the council will continue those conversations, we certainly didn't finish them there. I know there's been other discussions about many other ways that we're approaching this and that I look forward to. I know the Housing Committee and we'll have another joint meeting following up on the council's directive to really look at this and CDD is exploring it based on some of, obviously, the other work, the missing middle and others. This is a topic that we're all interested in and concerned about, so I just wanted to assure the council that we will be moving forward. We're hoping to build on the work that was done here and build on some of the other work that's been done in the last couple of months, examining these really important questions about how it is that we can move towards eliminating some of the exclusionary zoning policies that we have.
Thank you. Seeing, seeing no other hands up? Actually, Counselor Zondervan's hand is up. Go ahead, Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, that was just a leftover, sorry.
Oh, okay. So on Counselor Nolan's motion to accept this report and place it on file, we'll do a roll call.
On that motion, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons. Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to communication and reports from other city officers. There was one, there's one for me as usual, from information from the school committee and then there's a second one. We can, I can take, I can pull number two and we can place number one on file?
On placing number one on file, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Malin. Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons. Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We're on to communication reports from other city officers. A communication was received from Anthony Wilson, city clerk, transmitting information regarding the early voting home rule legislation. So there's some legislation on our unfinished business calendar and the communication informs us that this, the item was never filed during the session and can't be acted on. And so the city council. And so the city council would need to vote on this home rule petition again in order for the language to be refiled. Clerk Wilson drafted the petition again with the change in dates to reflect refiling this year. And so the council can move to adopt the modified home rule petition and send it to the state legislature. So really, the motions before us are to, basically, we can move to adopt the policy order attached to this communication and then place the communication on file. I see one hand up. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This time for real. I certainly support refiling this petition, but do we know why it was not filed? I mean, it is disappointing that we pass a home rule and it doesn't even get introduced to the legislature. Do we have any explanation for that happening?
Unfortunately, I do not have much of an explanation. We received an email from the, I forget, council, from Representative Decker's office, and they informed us that this had not been filed during this session of the legislature. And again, this is something that I think the council passed back in 2018. So I'm not sure of all of the legislative machinations that happened at the State House, but maybe they have to refile it every legislative session. And it wasn't refiled this year, but they did not elaborate.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you. So if we re, we vote to send this petition back to the legislature, are we again subject to the possibility that it will just sit there and no action taken on it in two years?
Yes.
Is there anything we can do about that?
No. What happens is once you file a special act, a home rule petition, it goes to the delegation and then the delegation has the, it's in their prerogative on how they push it through the legislative process.
And Counselor Zondervan, I think, I honestly don't know what happened in this situation. And, you know, that's why, it was under unfinished business. And I made a lot of inquiries to see, you know, what happened with it, where, when, you know. I think there was, I don't know really what happened, but when, once this, if we do adopt it, I'll make sure that the legislature has it and it doesn't happen again.
Okay.
So I see no other, oh, go ahead, Counselor Nolan.
Thank you, Mayor Siddiqui. Two questions. Can we, is there a reason, don't we always send home rules to the entire delegation and that ensures that all of them are able to work on it?
We do not usually, or at least since, my understanding is that we do not usually send it to the entire delegation. I believe it's sent to the, I believe it's the longest-serving member, I think. It's since I've been in the office, it's always been the tradition to send it to Representative Decker. There have been times when we've sent certain legislation to the entire delegation.
Okay. It just seems like-
Counselor Nolan?
It just seems like we'd want the entire delegation to be working on this. And then the other question is, in the copy, at least I have in my book, it says, "Beginning in the year 2019." Should that read, "Beginning in the year 2021"?
It should be. I thought I made that edit.
I made that edit for you, so I'm not sure what happened.
I don't know what happened. It should, we can amend it, the council can amend it right now. It should be 2021.
Okay.
So we'll amend it to 2021 and do a roll call?
On the amendment, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
The next vote will be on adopting the order which is attached to the communication and sending that to the legislature. Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons. Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. And on placing the communication on file, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey. Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
We now move on to any late resolutions. Clerk Wilson?
Yes. I have two late resolutions. I'll read the resolve paragraph, the resolve paragraph. I have a late resolution from, I believe it's from Counselor, I believe it's from Counselor-
Can you speak into the mic?
Sorry. I believe it's from Counselor, unfortunately, it's not written on here. The resolve paragraph reads that the city council go on record congratulating Donald Sheehan on his many years of service as a business agent and member of the IBEW Local 103. The second-
Counselor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Vice Mayor Malin would like to be added to that, please.
I would too, Mr. Chair.
And Counselor Simmons.
So we'll add Counselor Simmons, Counselor McGovern, and Vice Mayor Malin to the resolution?
On adding those three counselors to the resolution, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Counselor, excuse me, Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. On the resolution as amended, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons. Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. The second late resolution I have is from Counselor McGovern. The resolve paragraph reads that the city council go on record extending its deepest sympathy for the family of Charlene Holmes at this time of such personal loss.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor McGovern?
A quick comment. You know, we all know Charlene Holmes, who was murdered several years ago. This is Charlene's mother, who's also Charlene Holmes, who passed away suddenly a few days ago. I know this family very well and want, and this is to offer our condolences to them on yet another loss.
Our condolences to the entire family. On the resolution, Clerk?
On the late resolution, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan. Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Are there any late policy orders, Clerk Wilson?
I just received a late policy order from Counselor McGovern.
So we'll do a roll call to suspend the rules?
On suspension of the rules, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan. Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Counselor McGovern?
Thank you. If the clerk can share, I really want to apologize. I know that there was some confusion around policy order number one with some, the chart that was at the bottom. I think that's what prompted Counselor Carlon's question. And it was, I noticed on Twitter, there were some questions about it. I sent the first draft of the chart to the clerk to put on the, to put in the resolution, which was my mistake. There was a revised chart. I sent the wrong one. It is totally my fault. I didn't pick up on it. So I would like to amend policy order number one with the correct chart that better explains what it is we're asking for. So, Mr. Clerk, if you can, I don't know if you want to read it or put it up there so people can see it.
Clerk Wilson is pulling it up.
Yes, I'm having a hard time displaying it, so I don't know if I can make it much larger, but I believe there's a, there's a second line to the chart that reads, "Provided, provided," it says, "Number 29, provided that, provided that in residential and neighborhood business districts, no noise or odors are perceptible from adjoining lots. In residential districts, the use is restricted to one animal unless specifically increased by the special permit granting authority." Is that correct?
Correct.
Madam Mayor?
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you. Through you to my colleague, do we want to say one animal at a time?
Counselor McGovern?
I don't, we could. Maybe I would, maybe that's something we can just bring up in ordinance when we, when we do it. It's late and I don't, I've worked with other people on this and I just maybe don't want to make that on the floor. So I think we can amend it. We can amend it there. But again, I do apologize for the confusion.
So just through you-
Go ahead, Clerk.
Chair, so-
Clerk, I can't hear you at all.
I know. I keep saying, yeah, there's something going on.
I have my mouth right on the microphone. So to amend it, because it was already adopted, we have to, we have to, we have to, we're already in suspension, so you'd have to go to reconsideration, reopen the item, and then move to amend it and then go to a vote again. So those three, you could also make the amendment at the, in the ordinance committee.
Right. Exactly.
Yeah.
If, well, here's my question. If, again, sometimes I don't know always how this works. Is this going to be considered by the city solicitor a significant enough change that we're going to have to repost the whole, you know, I'd rather just fix it and have it go to ordinance correctly so we avoid that whole craziness that often happens?
Okay. So Clerk Wilson, you take the role, roles and how we need to do that.
So the first vote is on reconsideration. So reconsideration will allow you to open this item back up and, and take the vote, and take the vote to amend. So on reconsideration, Counselor- On reconsideration, Counselor Carlon.
Mr. Clerk, a yes is we're opening it up again.
That is correct.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Malin.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zondervan.
Yes.
Yes. Mayor Siddiqui.[1432.33]
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. On amending the, I believe it's the chart that's in the policy order to, with my substitution with the language that was just shown on the screen, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Ondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
On adopting the amended language, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes. Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Ondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. That item is done.
That item is taken care of? Okay, we're done? No more late orders?
I have no more late orders.
There are no more late orders. So, yes, Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this time, I'd like to move suspension of the rules, the purpose of reconsidering all items adopted this evening and hoping that same will not prevail.
Clerk Wilson?
On reconsideration.
Just point of information.
Counselor Nolan?
Just to really...
State your point.
Yes. We have already done two that we said would not be reconsidered, so this doesn't reverse that, right? We're just doing all the other ones.
Correct, correct. So, the first vote is on suspension of the rules so that the council can go to reconsideration. A yes vote will allow you to go to the reconsideration vote. A no vote will leave reconsideration, will not allow you to do that and leave reconsideration open. So, on suspension of the rules for reconsideration, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Ondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against. On reconsideration, again, a yes vote will leave these items open for reconsideration until Wednesday. A no vote will finalize all of the items tonight. On reconsideration of all of the items on the agenda, aside from the ones that had already been voted reconsideration on, Counselor Carlon.
No.
No, Vice Mayor Mallon.
No.
No, Counselor McGovern.
No.
No, Counselor Nolan.
No.
No, Counselor Simmons.
No.
No, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
No.
No, Counselor Toomey.
No.
No, Counselors Ondervan.
No.
No, Mayor Siddiqui.
No.
Motion fails, nine against. All of the items are final.
Any announcements? I see no announcements. We will adjourn on a motion by Counselor Carlon to adjourn. Roll call?
On adjournment, Counselor Carlon.
Yes.
Yes, Vice Mayor Mallon.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McGovern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Nolan.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sabrina Wheeler.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Toomey. Counsel, yes, Counselors Ondervan.
Yes.
Yes, Mayor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Motion passes nine in favor, zero against.
Thank you, Counselor Carlon and Counselor Nolan, and anyone else in here bearing the heat with me tonight. Good night, everyone. Take care.